Vice Chair Bob McCoole.
Here.
Rita DeZell.
Here.
Joanne Eaton. Phyllis Harden. Bob Melmards.
Here.
Rochelle Rittmuster.
Here.
Tom Ricker. Jim Sawtell.
Here.
Assistant Town Manager Beth Moiski. Attorney Jeff Parker.
I'm here.
Planner Fred Fox.
Here.
Thank you. Next one, public comment on consent agenda or non-agenda items. Anyone in the public wish to speak on consent agenda or non-agenda items? Ms. Horton.
Hi.
Hello, Michelle Horton, 3341 West Torres. So, I know there's other things going on this evening and I haven't actually, I admit, I haven't had a chance to review what the agenda was for tonight because some of it's not available on one of my devices online, so it makes things a little bit difficult. But I just wanted to talk a little bit more about what came on at the last meeting in regards to the roundabout plan, or proposed, I'm sorry, not planned, and hope that when you go to your final plans to submit to the board for review for the transportation update, that you really look at abolishing the one roundabout that is in consideration for 128 and McHastlin. And the biggest problem that I have with it, and I'm hoping to get in touch with people, but I have to say, I haven't had the chance to reach out to the neighborhood. I fully admit it's my issue, I don't have enough time right now. But a roundabout is intended to move traffic, to not impede the flow, to increase the level of consistency along the road, and by putting a roundabout at that interjection, you're only going to make things worse along McHastlin instead of better. We've already seen this happen because of the roundabout at Colton and McHastlin. There is never a pulse in the traffic, it's constant, it's increasing, and if we don't stop that in the one way that we can, by keeping a stoplight where there currently is one, it's only going to effectively make things worse if the tollway happens, which we have to kind of assume that it is. So, I hope that you really look forward to striking that before you bring it forward to the board.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my throat is still killing me, something.
Okay. Thanks for the comments. Anyone else like to have public comment on consent agenda or non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda, the approval of the November 5th, 2013, November 19th, 2013 meeting minutes. Anyone have any comments or?
Yeah, I've got corrections, typo here, I better not say out loud, I'll just show her.
Phyllis has already corrected that one.
She already corrected that one.
Yeah, I have proof of that right here.
All right. If I have anything else, let's see, I have one roundabout. Did we, so in that November 19th meeting, we didn't actually create a list for the board on the transportation plan at that meeting, or? I'm just trying to remember, we didn't? Okay, all right. So we're going to take your comments back.
Okay, so it wasn't, we actually didn't do an official rundown?
Tonight, yeah.
Okay. Let's see, I think that was it.
Oh, on page 12 of the November 5th minutes, it says that Alex said that the paving materials are more durable than concrete, and based on that, he thought they had a five-year life and a 10-year warranty, which doesn't make any sense.
I'm not sure what that is, but yeah, I was hoping that's reversed, but I'm assuming that's probably reversed. I mean, that's all I had. Okay. Anyone else have any corrections or changes?
Yeah, I don't know how much to try to parse out in some of these discussion minutes or whatever, but there are some things that either bear clarification or, or I don't know, outright kind of, I'm not sure that I heard the same consensus. If I look at some of the discussion in the original Superior area, that section, just a little clarification, when we talk about trucks on 76th Street, we're specifically talking about trying to get them to egress northbound from the Target Michael loading dock areas. So there's not a general thing about restrictions of trucks on 76th Street so much as getting those truck, those large 18-wheelers, you know, out from the neighborhood and park area, which is then south of those loading docks. So there's kind of that that seems to have been lost in that. You know, I'd ask the others, but I'm not sure I heard a consensus about the roundabout at Rock Creek Parkway. And yet it states it here that we generally favor it, I'm not sure I heard that. And the other thing that was not brought up that I thought was very important is that where, as we discussed, that there are these traffic areas graded D that are being shown, but yet we have not shown what is an E and an F, which to me would be a much more important thing to be looking at and considering. You know, D intersections, okay, those are okay to be looked at, but if we've got Es and Fs, you would think that we would want to be putting on our thinking caps about those, and so that didn't get captured at all under the bullet of other issues. So those are my comments to that.
Okay, anyone else? I had a, I had two, on November 5th meeting, page four, in the middle of the page, it talks about Chairperson Folsom says he's in favor of sign if it improves the corner. At the end of that paragraph, it says, "He agrees with Mr. Brickle's idea of gifting the sign to the town." And I think what should be added there, "In the event of a default of the license agreement," just to clarify what that means. And then in item number three below, in the paragraph below that, it says, "Well water," and I think that should be low water. I don't recall us ever talking about well water there.
Say that again, your location is where?
Page, page four on the November 5th meeting minutes, there's the conditions, conditions one through five.
Yes.
Number three, it says, "Consider solar, zero escaping and well water." Zero escaping and low water is kind of redundant anyway, but I think.
And it did say something about gray water? Could that maybe?
Maybe that's what.
I thought it said something about gray water use if possible is in here, I can't remember exactly.
Maybe that's what.
That was mentioned.
Maybe that's what it was, but I don't think it was well water.
I didn't know that was.
Okay. I think gray, I think gray water is correct. Okay, that's all I had. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, yeah, and to that, wasn't there a comment also about the drainage in that area being part of that?
Improvements to the drainage?
Improvements to the drainage.
And that is noted.
From the pictures.
I believe that is noted in here.
Okay. No, it's part of the plan, anyways, to improve the drainage.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve these with the changes mentioned?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the November 5th and November 19th minutes.
Motion by Commissioner McCool. Second, second by Commissioner Ricker. All those in favor?
How does that work if I identify those other things? I'm sorry. I don't understand.
I guess, yes, should we assume the changes would be incorporated?
Well, yeah, we'll need to circle back and make sure those were captured in the final version.
Okay.
Yes.
Make a little on the 15, I wasn't here on the 5.
Okay.
And I wasn't either, so.
Okay.
Why? I wasn't, yeah, on the board.
Okay, so let's, yeah, let's improve with the November 5th. Okay, so, all those for November 5th. Okay, we have Ricker.
Appropriate changes.
Ricker, Rittmuster, Folsom, Sawtell, Eaton and McCool. And then?
Make a motion to approve the November 19th minutes.
Motion by Commissioner McCool.
Oh, sorry.
Second by Commissioner Ricker, on November 19th. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, next, our agenda is item number five, public hearing and adoption of resolution recommending town, recommending the town board approve the final development plan case number FDP 2013-2 for ranch sports facility. Public hearing is now open. Is there proof of publication for our public hearing? Proof is confirmed. Presentation by the applicant.
And before the presentation starts, can I please ask that, I know that the, it has not been approved by the town board to be referring to Recreation Avenue, and that we've been talking about it as Avenue C, so if that could be clarified from the get-go here? Because it's all over in the documentation as Recreation Avenue, but town board did not invoke that.
Okay. Okay. Luke Taylor with the Ice Ranch, the applicant.
I wanted to start, I wanted to thank you all for having me here tonight. This has been a long time in coming. We've been working with the town of Superior for almost, at least, probably about three years to get to this point. You know, we originally started where our current facility is located. We looked at a Costco location, and then with the approval of the town center this summer, we finally have a home for us, and we've got this thing put together for you to hopefully move to the next step, and we can start building here pretty quick.
I'm sorry. All right.
All right, sorry about that. I wanted to start by giving a tour of what our proposed facility will look like, and then we can spend a little more time going through our FDP and answer any questions Little history on the project. Boulder Hockey Club built the original Boulder Valley Ice in 2001, and it was originally built as a temporary facility. It was designed for a three-year period, three-to-five-year period, and after that period, it was supposed to have been demolished and a permanent facility was supposed to have been built for them. Now we're going on 12, 13 years later, and we're finally at the point where we've been able to put together a plan and get a home to create a brand-new facility. As of right now, we have, we have signed contracts with 19 different customers in both turf and ice time rentals. So during that period from 2001 through now, there's been a huge increase in the demand for the services that we're going to be offering here. Most of our turf time, especially turf time and ice time in the wintertime, we've sold out about 90% of our peak time, and peak time we define as any time after school or on the weekend from September through March. Summer's also fairly busy for us, but, you know, primarily it's a indoor thing, so the demand is there. Actually, I'm, sorry. For our timeline, our goal is to have one rink open in September with, and keep this existing facility open for a month or two slough period, have the second rink come online sometime in October, have the turf field come online by the end of October, and then the Impact Sports and Medical Office Building will come online by the end of the year. Our goal originally was to have, obviously, the entire facility open at the same time, but because how long everything has taken to get us to this point, that's no longer, no longer feasible. So, but by the end of 2014, is, is everything will be fully up and operational. I think everyone's pretty familiar with the location, especially with all the town center pieces in here, but, and with some of the town center slides, our building would be right at the end of Main Street there, so it will be the white part that's going to be filled in there shortly. Here's our site plan. As you can see, the total parcel is about 7.12 acres. We have parking lot on the south, excuse me, north, parking lot on the south, it has about 200-plus parking spots. Working from north to south, this area right here is the four-story medical office building. This is the Impact Sports training area. This right here is either a swim school or potentially a basketball, basketball court for a basketball group. Here's where our turf field is. We've got three horizontal fields, if you will, and then you can pull up the, there's dividers that drop down here, you can pull those up and make it one long field that you can play, you know, indoor soccer, indoor lacrosse, or really any type of turf sport that's available. We have a small rink right here, a practice rink, and then two main rinks in this area. And we'll go into a little more detail as we kind of move along with the presentation. This is where we envision the completed facility to look like. We've got samples over here for you guys to take a look at, but I think it, I think it came out really, really nice. I would challenge you to find another recreation facility or ice rink or turf facility that really looks like this and doesn't, doesn't look like a recreation facility, if you will. I mean, this looks to me more of a, you know, something that would fit in, you know, I think what you guys are envisioning for the town center. This is our rendering of the medical office building. Like I said, four-story building with, and we'll go through kind of the detail of what's in it there, but about 60,000 square foot building that will be attached on to the end of our, our building and attached on to the Impact Sports. Let's get through this part. Here are the, we've colored up a little bit of the floor plans, we've blown up some other ones back there that, if you want any more detail as to kind of what the indoor pieces are, what the interior layout will look like in each piece, and then we're going to kind of go through it in more detail. We'll further on here. So, this facility will have two full-size ice rinks in it, and full-size means 200 feet long, 85 feet wide, standard NHL, NHL rinks. Spectator seating, we have, we have room for 384 people to be able to view on one side, and the other side is 871 seats for it. The smaller rink, the seats are on the second level, looking down over the ice. On the first level, they start off at ice level and work their way up from the first floor up into the second floor. The larger rink is the rink that we plan on hosting junior games. I don't know if you are aware, but there's currently a junior hockey team, and for those of you who are unfamiliar with what that means, it's a, a junior hockey team is a team of kids who are between 16 and, you know, 20. And they're, they're not professionals, they're, it's still amateur. It's kind of a stepping spot before they go on, and most of them would go on to play college hockey somewhere, or if they're good enough, they could jump right into the pros, but mostly college hockey at that point. The big rink will have 871 seats, and that's where we plan on having the junior games. The junior games take place on eight weekends a year. They play a Friday, Saturday, Sunday schedule, and then, then they play the rest of the games, obviously, on the road. So, it's an eight-week kind of impact in there, but then they play from September through, through the end of March here. We've also got a party deck on the second level, which has the ability to add more seats at a later date if, if it's something that, that their attendance warrants, as well as five kind of suites that have couches and kind of a comfortable living room atmosphere right, right at the glass level at the end there. Practice rink, the practice rink is a 80, 85-foot-long by 60-foot-wide mini rink. And the reason why we put this into, into the plan is this is a perfect scenario for, for younger kids. Most of, most of the kids who play, who are eight years and younger, they're playing cross ice anyway, because they're too little to get around on the full ice. And as a result, 85 feet is actually the width of the cross ice, but you have the boards going around the end, so the pucks stay in there, and it's a better setup. It also frees up our main rinks for the bigger kids, as well as the adults to be able to use that time, so it's not tied up with here. This is also a perfect place for additional lessons or, you know, skill sessions. In the metro area here, there are a total of nine rinks, and if, if you have a child and he wants a little extra practice time or private lesson or what have you, you cannot go book ice time at any of these facilities during the winter, it's that full. And so, having something like this allows us to have a place for really the whole metro area to go in order to be able to do some of these lessons. We have the ability to divide these, this rink into thirds, so we can have three different bays, and you could have a goalie lesson or a, you know, really skating lesson or what have you, as well as, you know, U8 practices and so forth. On the upper level, we have a dryland area. This is primarily for the hockey teams that will be playing out of here. In addition to practicing on the ice, they do spend quite a bit of time, strength, agility training and so forth, and right now they do it out in the parking lot, so this will be a step up for that, for them. Second level, we have a space for a restaurant, and this, this space is, has kind of some unique attributes in that there are four balconies around this space, and each one of the balconies, can I show you? Let me bring this up real quick. Are they flipping back and forth? But, see this green area right here? This green area is the space for the restaurant. And so each one of these balconies overlooks one of the playing surfaces, so you can move over the turf field, looks over the smaller rink, this rink and the main rink. And they're, they're theater-style seats, so you're, you know, elevated above, so you have view if you're in the back row with an area in front, you have your food or drink up there. We also have an outdoor patio design that overlooks right down Main Street, so I think this is going to be a really, really nice place. As of right now, it's, it's looking, we're still in negotiations, but I think it's going to be Oscar Blues will be the, will be the restaurant and one of their concepts. I don't know if you're familiar with, with Oscar Blues, but they have a number of concepts that they've tried in, especially in the Longmont area, and obviously they own Dale's Pale Ale and sell a fairly large microbrewery for Colorado, so I think it would be a pretty, pretty nice, nice coup to get those guys to come in here. Couple snack bars in here, one at the, the main entrance area, and then one in the, there'll be two portable versions in the stands for when we have games that are, you know, attract that type of attention, will have the ability for, for people to get food and beverages from their seats. Bouncy room, we have, we have a space on the second level for inflatable bouncy area. This is a, not as, not like a monkey business or a, you know, you know, I've been to many of these with my, with my son, but it's a, it's a, we'll have two of these in here, it'll be more of a place for parents and to be able to drop off siblings while they're watching the other, other kid's game, or whether they're on the turf surface or what have you. It also is available to be rented out for birthday parties and so forth. Pro shop, the, we have a pro shop right in the main entrance as you're coming in. It's going to be, it's going to be through Pro Skate, so I think Pro Skate is currently over by Superior Liquors right there, and so they're going to be moving into the, into the rink once, once this area is finished. They'll have a, about a 1,500 square foot facility in there, and they'll, they'll carry the different sporting goods items for ice and for turf sports. This facility has 24 locker rooms in it, so it's really, you know, a lot of, a lot of fields, a lot of ice surfaces and locker rooms, that's primarily what the building is. Five of these, these locker rooms are for private rentals. We have a group called the Rocky Mountain Roughriders that will be one of our largest tenants here, and they currently play out of a number of rinks around there, and they're consolidating all of their, all of their operations to here, but they'll have, they play at AAA level, so they get their own stalls and they keep their equipment there, and it's a kind of a one-step toward the junior team, but it's a kind of a requirement for people who are playing at that level, because they're competitive, which is, there's a group in the south that does it, has their own locker room, so they kind of even have their own locker rooms as well. The turf field, the turf field is a 215-foot-long by 130-foot-wide turf field, and that is a big, big turf field. Most turf, most indoor turf fields you see are really basically the size of a, of an ice rink. This is about 50% larger than that, so it's a, it's a really good-sized facility. The reason why we made it the way we did is we have, Broomfield Soccer is our main soccer tenant in here, and one of the, one of the big things from USA Soccer is they want kids to be playing small game, small games. And, you know, the USA Soccer's come down and said, basically, that the reason why we feel we haven't done as well internationally as we should with the amount of money and the number of kids that are playing in it is because we're not, we don't really work well with small, small areas. And, you know, they point to kids in third-world countries that can play in an alley and, you know, and get creative and figure this stuff out, so they really want to focus on the small game. So really, this field was actually designed as three smaller fields that go width-wise. Now, if you lift up the dividers, then you have the ability to go length-wise there, and it's a perfect-sized field for adult indoor soccer or adult indoor, or kids indoor lacrosse. So those will be our primary two tenants in there, but I also see, you know, baseball teams, football teams, rugby teams, really anyone who wants to train in the wintertime usually trains on a field, so it's a, I think this will be a very, very high-demand area. We're working on a deal with a group called Waterworks, they're out of LA, and they want to build two swimming pools in there, and one's 28 by 75, one's 21 by 75, so equivalent in lanes, that would be about seven lanes worth of pools. Their primary business model is to, is to teach younger kids how to swim. They have really warm water. They have really warm water, so it's comfortable for kids. They don't use chlorine in there. They treat it with UV light. So it's a pretty nice environment, and they have very small classes, four kids per instructor. So it's, they've had a lot of success in Southern California with this model, and they're expanding to Colorado. And we're working on a deal with them to be part of this center. If, a couple other users of this space would also be swim teams, so it does have the ability to be rented out to swim clubs with twenty-five-yard pool. They can train in that. And also, as you know, Cornerstone Orthopedics will be in the medical building right next door to them, and they do a lot of PT and physical therapy out there. And so this is a perfect place for them to also be able to do some extra PT. The other option, if the pool part doesn't end up working out, is there would be an extra basketball, extra basketball court and three volleyball courts for Impact Sports in this area. Right now, Impact Sports has a basketball court and three volleyball courts. They're considering adding a second one in there, which would go into this space, because there's been a lot of interest in having tournaments, whether it's basketball or volleyball, and you can't do it with only one space. They need two. So it's going to be one or the other in that particular space. Impact Sports is a, it's a, the training rehabilitation are the Cornerstone Orthopedics. They currently have a facility in Broomfield, which they will be closing and moving to this space. They started off really on the training for medical surgeries and, you know, rehabilitation. Since then, they've really branched out into really any type of sports training. So whether it's individuals, whether it's teams, whether it's kids, whether it's adults, whether it's classes, you know, they really do pretty much everything. They have, like I said, a basketball court, three volleyball courts. They're leasing one of our turf fields, a little turf area. They have a smaller turf area of their own. There's a weight room, there's aerobics room, spin room, batting cages on the second level. There's a pitcher's mound, or pitching mound for baseball training in the wintertime. So really, these guys can pretty much train really any sport and really any level in You know, I just put a sample of the sports that I expect to have participate in this facility, but it's really, you could pretty much think of any sport, and we have a space for them. By the time you have ice, a pool, weight room, turf area, you can really, really do pretty much anything in there. We also have a team meeting room on the second level for teams to go do video work and that sort of thing. Also, there's a six-hundred-and-eighteen-square-foot community room. And then there's some storage area for tables and chairs behind that, but you can seat sixty-five people for the town of Superior. This room is open to be reserved by any Superior town resident, so it's, and I'm assuming it's going to be no charge, but that's really up to the town as to how they want to set that up. But this is going to be, I think, a really nice benefit from what I've heard around is it's pretty tough to find meeting space, especially if you have any sort of a size of a room in there. Medical office building. This medical office building will be owned and built by Cornerstone Orthopedics. On the first level, there will be an after-hours care. There's also going to be a medical imaging, as well as a pharmacy, so that'll be the first level. The second level will be the offices for Cornerstone. They're currently over in Lewisville at the hospital over there, so they'll be moving across the street and moving all their staff up there. The third and the fourth floor will be just leased out to medical, for medical office space. You know, dentists, you know, it's, I think USA Rugby is looking at taking, moving from Boulder down to this building. So from talking to Joe, they've got all the whole building leased out at this point. So it should be a pretty nice addition to the town of Superior with a lot of people I wanted to spend a little time talking about how we're building this building. And our utilities are our third-biggest expense in operating this, you know, keeping an ice rink cold or cool, or, you know, cooling off the turf field. We've designed this facility so that we're putting R through the use of these insulated panels that are primarily used in, you know, cold storage, food service industry. We can get R thirty-two in the walls and R thirty-eight in the roof, which is forty percent greater than the rink we have down in Littleton. We've specked out the most efficient technology for compressors, pumps, heating, air conditioning, lighting products. We're using, reusing our water, so the heat from all of the compressors is going to preheat all of our water for the facility. We'll also heat the pool. So we're using, we're pulling all of the energy we put into making everything cold, pulling the heat off of that, and using that for our whole hot water supply and some of our heating supply on it. This, the ice portion of this facility is eighty percent larger than our one in Littleton. And yet, our energy bill will be seventeen percent less than that facility. On a per-square-foot basis, we're a buck forty a square foot for this facility. Currently, we're paying right now three dollars and four cents, so it's less than half for where we're at. And that's a facility that was designed and built in 2007, so it's come a long way. Technology's come a long way on this sort of stuff. Town of Superior benefits, and I think we've spoken about some of these, but I thought I would kind of brainstorm a little bit and kind of show you why I think this is desirable for the town here. We expect our facility to generate one-point-six-million visitors over the course of a year. And most of these one-point-six-million visitors, they're not coming in, you know, a huge rush, but it's a consistent, every hour, the next group goes out, the next group goes out, the next group goes out. When you add up all those hours, we open at five-thirty in the morning and close at two-thirty in the morning, so we're open, you know, twenty-one hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty days a year. And when you add up all those hours, it gets to be a fairly large number. A good portion of those people who are coming probably wouldn't go to Superior on a regular basis. You know, our, the area that we'll pull from is, if you take a, put a pin in this location and draw a circle thirty minutes from there, basically by car, that's where our group will come from. So you can get all the way down into Denver, you know, downtown. I mean, you can almost get up to halfway to Fort Collins and, you know, Golden and what have you. So there's going to be a fairly large area that we'll pull in from. Obviously, we're going to, we're supposed to be the anchor tenant for the town center to make sure that the town center generates enough traffic so that it is successful. There's a group called THK and Associates. They did a study, and it was for a different municipality, but they did a study on a sixty-six-thousand-square-foot ice facility. And their conclusion was that, and I've provided this to Matt, but the economic impact for the town of Superior is equivalent to a Super Target or Super Walmart, with maybe a little nicer use than having another. Town of Superior is getting a state-of-the-art recreation facility with minimal municipal support and no ongoing operational support. We talked about the community room, and then on top of it, the town has a right to a hundred hours of turf time and a hundred hours of ice time per year to be programmed as to whatever, you know, skate with Santa, or, you know, soccer sports camp in the summertime, that they can program however they would like. Contact information and square-foot size. So now, you can obviously see the handouts that we have out here. So we have a couple of the renderings, larger renderings. We've got the samples and larger floor plans if you want to take a look on it. But I guess, do you guys have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so at this point, we'll take questions from the commissioner to the applicant. Commissioners have questions. Then after that, we'll go on to any staff presentation and questions of staff.
With respect to the town's usage of the office, or, I'm sorry, the community room, and also the usage of the ice time and that sort of thing, is there a sunset on that? I mean, how long does that, does that commitment last?
That commitment lasts for every year while it's still open. So there is not a, there's not an end date.
Okay, Commissioner Dusel.
Thank you for the presentation. It was very good. I had a few questions here, and I think you've answered a couple of them, but the mezzanine, I guess, is where the four balconies are. Is that on the second level? I couldn't really tell from the diagrams, but...
Sure, yes, that, yeah, the second level.
Okay. And then the Oscar Blues location, is that basically, or the potential Oscar Blues, is that the same as what you refer to as a grill kitchen?
Yes, that's, the Oscar Blues area would be this same green area on the second level. So I was talking about the same, the first part I was saying, this is the space for it. The second part was, and here's who we think is going to take this space.
Right, that'd be great, I think, you know. I've been to the Oscar Blues in Longmont, so I think it'd be great. And I like the idea of balconies overlooking all the ice. That would be very fun to be there, too. The other, another question is, there's some stairs on the outside. Do they lead up to that second-level mezzanine?
Correct, yep. See those stairs that go, they go up there? That's the outdoor patio for, you know, hopefully, the Oscar Blues, but it's also an entrance for them, so they don't have to go through the building.
Okay, great, excellent. Okay, then my next one is, and you don't have to answer this right now, but I was trying to count. I saw all your locker rooms and everything, but I was trying to understand how many public restrooms there were, and it didn't seem like there were enough. But, you know, I'll leave that up to you to make sure, because women hate to stand in line outside to at every event, athletic event. We're always standing outside.
I can tell you that in our first facility, we did not put enough bathrooms in it, and that has been one of my biggest regrets that we, you know, had since I, since we opened it. I can tell you, this particular one will have more bathrooms than probably you've seen in any other, you know, on a per-square-foot basis than any other, than any other facility. We also have the ability to take that bouncy room and add more bathrooms in that space as well. But, you know, there's a very, very high number of stalls compared to square footage in terms of bathrooms. I will go out on a limb here and say that bathrooms will not be a problem.
Okay, love it, thank you. That'd be great, because I couldn't, I was counting all the locker room ones, and I couldn't tell which ones were public ones for the rest of us that need to go to the restroom. Then, let's see, so, some, then, and some of these others I might come back to in just a moment, but, how will the signs be lit on the outside? Will they be very bright? I saw some pretty big signs, and I was kind of concerned about that.
We haven't submitted our signage. That's going to be a future submittal. We just were putting kind of placeholders and markers there at this particular point, because we're not quite as sure exactly what we want to put on those signs and what, you know, what size we want those signs to be and so forth. So I think that's a future discussion point.
Okay, I'd be, I just caution that, you know, bright, remember all the problems we had in Denver with the Quest sign when they put it up after US West? I mean, you know, people sit in their bedrooms and they go and sometimes, or even drive by, and the signs can be pretty big and bright. And then, then, let's see. The other thing was, I was going to ask, and you didn't go into this, I don't know if it will ask us of you, Luke, but the bike path behind the building, is that on the US Thirty-Six bike path? Is that actually up against Thirty-Six and on the other side of the detention pond? Or is that right up against your building? I couldn't tell from the drawing.
No, it's not up against our building. It really, I'll get back to the, there you go. So, and Alan, wait, I can answer that one. Alan here is our...
Alan Brooks with WBC.
Okay, thank you.
Where's our run? It's running, Alan, thirty feet. We need your mic. There you go. It's actually running right here.
Okay.
About thirty feet inside the right-of-way for US Thirty-Six. And I've looked at that, and it's, yeah, it's pretty much right on top of that easement right there.
Okay, and then that one, I think you mentioned that was only twelve feet, that parking lot's only twelve feet away from the property line of the CDOT easement, the Thirty-Six easement.
Yes, twelve feet right there.
And that's not a problem with CDOT? They won't have a problem with that, that we're that close? I didn't know if there were any setback requirements.
No, the actual drivelines are clear over here, about a hundred and some feet away.
Right, right, I understand that. But I'm just saying, even their easement, sometimes I get a little persnickive about that. Okay, thank you.
Just a follow-up on your, on the bike path. How does that connect in to the facility that...
It doesn't actually connect into this facility. There's another connection that I've seen on the town center plans that's further up. There's a underpass underneath the highway, and I believe that's where the connection is, up there. I've also seen one further down here in a floodplain, closer to where the bridge is.
So people accessing your facility via bike, you wouldn't anticipate that you're going to end up with social trails jumping.
Yeah, no, they wouldn't be able to come in through here. Part of it, this little black line here is a four- or five-foot-high retaining wall. That's going to stop them. Plus the right-of-way fences, I don't think they're going to be getting them.
Okay, all right.
And, you know, that's a good question. And I understand the bike path isn't really ours as much as it's the Thirty-Six project, so we'll have to connect in somehow the town. And then I looked around the, on the plans, too, how many bike racks there were, and there were quite a number, so I was happy to see that, you know, they're all around the building, except in the back, but, which they shouldn't be in the back, but, so that would be good. And then, do you also know, speaking about that, that east drive there, or also referred to as a fire lane on the backside of the building?
Yeah, this one.
Yeah. So that, it just seems like it's kind of crowded in there, and is it meant to be a street, or is it meant to be a fire lane? Because one time it's referred to as a drive, and then the other is...
Well, it's really a service lane, or service driveway, which is a fire lane.
Okay.
And really, what this is for is so that we can get to the trash compactor in this area here. We have our mechanical units in here. This is really not for the public, other than maybe circle through.
Okay.
And because of the way this is graded in here, we have a guard rail in here to protect cars from going into the pond and that type of thing. Yeah, we've...
That would be exciting, though.
Kind of downplay that a little bit.
It could be the other pool.
I have a follow-up question on that same drive. Is it, is it necessary to be so wide, and could it potentially be a one-way and have some more parking back there?
We've got it to the minimum for the fire department.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty tight. And then the one thing I was questioning or concerned about when I looked at it, up here it doesn't look quite as bad, but on the big drawings, it seemed like it did. That parking lot, the, up there, the parking spots, those eight that are right there, I wouldn't want to park ever on those first three and back into that case somebody be screaming around that little corner there, so...
Oh, grading-wise, it won't be a problem. You know, I've got it fairly flat right in here, so there's good visibility through here.
Okay, that's good. It just seemed like that would be an accident waiting to happen, somebody back out right there in a hurry, and then someone else is hurrying because they couldn't... there in a hurry, and then someone else is hurrying because they couldn't find a parking spot on the south side, so they come screaming through here, and that, those first three were kind of a concern about, that I had. Okay, and then, and then I noticed you mentioned, too, that it was sparsely landscaped back there, because you have any space to landscape it.
The landscaping that's going to occur along here is actually going to happen on the other side, and it's being done by SDC.
Okay, and that was what I was going to say, is that I would highly encourage that we kind of beef up that landscaping in the detention's pond area.
Yeah, I've seen their plans, and I've seen ours, and they both kind of complement each other, we, we actually had their plans when we prepared the ours, and so we kind of spotted in between where they were putting trees and shrubs, and, and keep it in mind that we have two different levels as well.
Okay. Excellent, that, that would be, that's very good. Then the south parking lot on Lot 3, it says encroaches on Lot 2 by 5 feet, will the garage that's planned there also encroach on Lot, your Lot 2?
Yeah, what we have right here, there's a little black line that goes there, that's the actual property line, there's an 8-foot easement here where the building can extend into it, and, and the reason we had to do that was because of building codes and separation to the property line, but the actual facility itself will sit just over that line, it'll encompass this entire 120 spaces, and it will be multi-layers above it, and from what I've seen, the way it's designed, this driveline here will have a 14-foot-plus clearance, so fire trucks and service vehicles can drive under it, and then it kind of has a ramp, comes in like this and starts looping up.
So, there'll be a separation between the parking garage structure and the building?
Yes.
Still, okay.
Yes.
So, you still could have some green space there, a little bit of green space?
Right, this green space will remain.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, that will, that will stay there, and, and parking structure will come up pretty much right down the center of that sidewalk.
Okay, and then how tall will that be, the parking structure, it's just four stories, but I didn't...
A little bit, 40 some feet.
Forty, yeah, 40 some feet, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, the, you know, zero setbacks always bother me a little bit, and there's a lot of zero setbacks here, so that's just a concern I have generally. I know the building, the building is big, so that's why you're doing that, but it does concern me a little bit when we have...
The reason we actually went to the zero setback was because of this configuration right here, between the medical office building, which is on the land lease, and on the rest of the facility, and that's, again, just so we can get the two up together, we don't have a dead space in between, there is, you know, some pretty good separation between parking structure and the building on Lot 3.
And over on this side of the ice, I think on that side probably, too, on the south edge there, but on this side, there's zero space, right?
Yeah, so really our only real setbacks here, and the reason we put them on the zeros is because that's what's permitted in the PD.
Okay, and then my last question, and I thank you very much for answering these, is that on the east, east elevation of Cornerstone in the documents, and this is just kind of a nitty-picky kind of a thing, it said the surface was of the, the backside, the east side of the Cornerstone building was going to be brick, but it looks like it's actually, which was E, but it looks like it's actually J, best block split face, but I don't know, I mean, it's not that, yeah. So, on the elevation view, on the backside of it, it just was probably marked 12.
Yeah, see, we got a brick there, and we got...
I think it marked it as brick all the way up, yeah, yeah, but it, it's a, it must be that split.
Well, we have different tones of brick, and different colors and textures.
That's not a big, you know, but I just noticed that.
I think this was, this is the same view part, right?
No, it's, it's this one.
This part, right?
It's the backside, it's just east, east elevation view, right there.
Yeah, this is, this is all brick.
The brick in the, up to the third, fourth story, but then the fourth story and above looks like that split.
Rita, you've got a laser, you can, little box in front of you, if you want to, if you want to point it at it.
Okay. That's not a, I, I, you know, it's not a big, you'll resolve that as you go through the development. Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, other questions? Commissioner Ricker?
I got a, I got a question to the operator of this, this facility, not specifically against the impact portion of it or the medical center, but you have a pretty ambitious plan for an awful lot of sports facilities, organizations using all these different things, and BVI had a huge problem with unexpected drills, that's what I would call, which is a good problem to have, but honestly, what is your vision for how this all marries up in the end? Because I could, I could see, what, seven, eight organizations already you were talking about, using various portions of this?
We actually have 19.
Yeah, on the contracts, but I'm just saying, we'll call it sports, you know, for lack of a better word, different kinds of sports and different kinds of usages.
Sure.
I don't see any, you know, I could see this thing growing, growing the facility pretty quick.
Well, yeah, it could, but, you know, at, at the end of the day, I mean, this is how much land we have, and this is how big we can make it, and there's only 24 hours in a day, so, I mean, that's really what dictates how big we can get, it's, it's, when, when I could start selling the 4:00 AM ice time slot, then, you know, you know, Superior needs another, another sheet.
You have a place to put it, somewhere else.
Yeah, and it's not, unfortunately, we, we don't have the ability to, you know, at one point, we were, you know, when we were looking at alternate locations, that was one of the, one of the nice things about the, kind of the Costco side, is we did have that ability to grow into a future deal, but, you know, it's, this, there's a lot of benefits for being here, and I think it's going to be a great project, and, you know, this is, it is what it is.
It's a nice problem to have, I'm just, I was just sitting there as you were rattling off all these different facilities and usages, tournaments, do that, private lessons here and there, I can see you guys have grown this thing pretty fast.
Yeah.
If it all comes together, which is always the case.
Sure.
I like the elevations and the breaking up the stuff, it does not have the feel of a recreational center, I've built a few of them, so I, I know what they look like, but, you know, that, I just, the, the materials that are in it, you're, you're going to work on making sure that that, those different variations come across, because I could see where this could get VE'd very easily, that was my first impression when I looked at the elevations of it, you know, first things that'll go will be the finishes on the outside.
Well, I, I don't think we're allowed to do that, I'm looking back over here at Randy, so I don't, I don't think the town will allow that, and I don't think Ranch Capital will allow that, and, so, you know, this is what we, this is what we've, what we've designed, and this is what we would like to build, and that's what it's going to be.
Yeah, certainly it's a very urban look, so...
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, it's a, it's a hard, I mean, this, this facility is massive, I, you know, I don't...
You kind of get some sense from looking at this, you know, this, this rendering right here, of how big this is, but...
Can you get to the mic because of the recording device won't pick up your voice?
Sorry about that, so, you know, if you, if you take a look at the, you know, the size of this, I mean, keep in mind, this doesn't even include the medical office building, which goes, you know, on the end of this, so, I mean, this is, this is a big, big building in here, and...
631 and a half feet.
Thank you. It's, it's large, and so, you know, we try to dress it up as best we can and try to make it interesting, but at the end of the day, it's, it's big, it really is, yeah. Now, I wanted to clarify a couple of things on Alan's piece on the parking structure, that hasn't been designed or submitted yet, so, you know, keep in mind that, that park could change, and it may not even be one at that particular point, that's more the metro district was to make that decision. And then, I also, there were some questions on some of the, from some of the focus groups, and there will also be figure skating in here, so we will have a figure skating club, as well as, there's a lot of open skate time where, you know, for the most part, that's what they're doing, is, is figure skating.
Can you define a lot?
Uh, we have, it, a little bit...
For the public skate?
Yeah, on the public side of it, you know, it, it depends a little bit on the season, but specifically around all the holidays, there's quite a bit, spring, fall, summer, there's quite a bit, and I guess quite a bit would be 20 hours a week, so, you know, that's, that would be normal. It's a little bit less, you know, for a few months in the wintertime, just because the, the demand's so high from, from the different clubs, but one of those clubs is a figure skating club, so...
In Europe, I mean, I haven't looked at the schedule lately, but there's not a whole lot of public time currently, right, it's, it seems like it's maybe 5, 10 hours a week or so, or is it?
Uh, no, because we also have that skill pad area, too, that we can put some in there.
No, I mean, the existing...
Oh, in the existing one?
Yeah, it's pretty limited, right?
Yeah, it's, once again, spring, fall, early fall, summer, there's some, but, you know, having a one-sheet facility and, and having outgrown it six or seven years ago.
Is there, do we have any requirement or to, to keep that public ice time available, or, I mean, if you grow and get busy, and, I mean, it's more profitable for you to do...
You have your 100 hours, so you can use those for whatever...
So, as you get busier, that's what's going to go first, I assume, is the, the public rec skate?
Uh, to some degree, it depends on, obviously, some public rec skates are great, you know, we have, we have a couple of team ones, nighttime ones like a Friday night, that, you know, it's, it's been wonderful, and those will never go like that.
Profitable for you?
Yeah, yeah, you know, it, it, but it really comes down to how well are they attended, if they're attended well, you know, you can, it's more profitable for us to have a rec skate than to run out an hour of ice to a hockey or a team or a figure skating club, so it's really comes, comes down to attendance.
Can I go on that ice?
Okay.
There's a, a few people have asked me about whether there'd be a, ever be an outdoor rink, you know, similar to like what we have in, in Lowesville and some other towns, and I maybe I might be looking to Randy and Ranch Capital more so than, than, than Ranch Sports, but has there been any thought to doing that in the wintertime?
See those irrigate, see those retaining ponds?
Yeah.
There's three around there, I, you know, in the back of my mind, I don't know how feasible it is, but the back of my mind, I, I thought that would be pretty cool, be able to do someone else, because there's, there's three of them out around there.
I mean, people have asked, and, I mean, with you guys there, that means, you know, there's a...
And from what I've heard, in the wintertime, there's going to be an outdoor skating rink in, in the town center, so...
Okay, is that, okay.
You know, that's what I've heard, so you can't...
I'm hoping we'll take advantage of their, their skills to maintain that ice, too.
So, yeah, we were, we were planning on helping out with that piece of it, so I think during the holiday season, there'll be a, you know, something similar to like a Belmar, or, you know, Streets of South, or whatever, if they have those.
So, you're still going, I'm not going to interrupt you.
No, that's all right, I'm, I'm just kind of reviewing these plans, but, I was more concerned after hearing the speech of the 19, what am I writing right now, 19 Costco clients coming up in all different, various, various uses, it's kind of, it's kind of a tax facility like this, I mean, I thought it was going to be more focused towards ice time and practice runs, and so you took the turf piece into account, the basketball courts into account, on and on and on.
You know, it, it definitely will be a busy facility, but the nice thing about this type of facility is it's a very controlled busy, meaning that, you know, there's only a certain number of people that are here every specific hour, you know, obviously you have some higher-profile games, we get more, more fans out there for that, but for the most part, it's, you know, a team or two teams for each surface, and then a team or two teams in the locker rooms waiting to come out, and, you know, some, some parents watching, or, or siblings around there, so it's, it's a consistent busy, but it's not, it's not like a Black Friday busy and then, you know, January 7th, so it's, it's not, you know, feast or famine.
Well, it requires, down the road, I would give some kind of flexibility would have to build into this, like...
Excuse me?
Some flexibility would have to be built into some of this, I would guess.
Oh, sure.
That grows, because you don't have any land to expand to, right there, maybe the town, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I have some...
Further questions?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Commissioner Redmister.
How many parking spaces, including the overflow areas, are currently at the existing BVI's facility?
You know, I haven't actually counted them, but my guess is about 110, 120, if you include that field to the, to the right of the door there.
And you referred to your Riddleton facility, how, how many sheets of ice are there?
Two.
And how many parking spaces do you have there?
We have 120.
And is there any other parking associated for that facility?
We have reciprocal agreements with our neighbors around there, where they can have their customers parking our lots, and our customers can park in theirs, so we have access to probably another 100, 120 spaces.
So, those are as lots?
But, but they're only needed, you typically during tournaments, or, you know, like I said, high-profile games, our, our normal, normal day-to-day capacity are 120, are 120 spaces, I think, for it.
So, with three sheets plus a lot more activity, that could easily be well over 225 to 250?
I, I thought we needed 469 spaces for our, our day-to-day usage, and then, you know, for the few special events, like when the junior games are in town, you know, it gets up closer to 600, but we'll have to do special, you know, shuttle in, you know, that sort of thing, for that sort of, those type of events.
So, on one of the slides, it was one of the later slides, was kind of showing some, some kind of data points, including how many spaces and how many shared spaces, and I guess my question is, shared with whom, shared, shared where?
With the town center. There, so, on our, on our site, we have 212 spaces that are specifically for us, although there's someone in the...
Does that include Cornerstone?
Yes.
So, that includes Cornerstone, too?
Well, so I was wondering, too, that's Impact Sports and their, I mean, that's the entire facility, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I did want to elaborate, get you guys to elaborate more on parking, and when, what's going to trigger the garage, and...
I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about parking.
Do you want me to explain this?
No, I'm sorry, I'm a public works director, I just wanted to give you a breakdown of parking counts in, in various locations, these are the lots, in terms of the 102 spaces in the north lot, 120 spaces in the south lot, seven spaces in the circle, and then on the, on Street, on Recreation Avenue, we have 22 stations kind of on the north area, 26 spaces in the south, so it's about 48 spaces on Recreation Avenue, and on Main Street, we have a number of spaces, so there's 106 spaces included in FDP number one, on-street spaces, and there's 229 in parking lots, and are proposing to have a temporary parking lot, so in parking lots, we would have 309 spaces, 106 spaces on-street, so there'd be, on day one, if the infrastructure's built, it'd be 415 spaces to begin with, and I think Luke and his, and his team had put together a very good shared parking analysis, because his peak air parking needs occur on weekends and evenings, and Cornerstone occurs at other times, so they've determined their maximum parking demand is about 469, so, at day one, we don't have it, but they're not, hopefully, I mean, not hopefully, but they're building up their, their programming and so forth, so we do have a, a problem that, that we could have short-term. In long-term, here's, here's what could happen, here's how I would count, we can, we have the north lot, that's a service lot, we could have conceptual plans, have the parking garage at 354 spaces, we have the circle lot, so we have 463 spaces kind of on-site, and I would count maybe the spaces on the east side of Recreation Avenue, right adjacent to them, at 28 spaces. adjacent to them, at 28 spaces. So that would give us a total of 491 spaces, which kind of meets their maximum parking demand. So just in long-term and short-term, and then we'll discuss how, how we get there and how we, how we monitor it. So I wanted to point that out as you, as you talk about where the parking is.
So the, the short-term only starts to pull in these other streets, Main Street, whatever. My, my concern is that we are creating, that we've not budgeted for street parking. We've already got a very, very tight street parking budget based on projected units that will be built for residential, projected for, we came up with this sharing for residential and the daytime types of businesses we thought would be there and things like that, and, and we already have a tight, tight street budget. And now what I see is that this, this overwhelming facility is now going to completely blow the, the budget and in fact be competing at the very times that our model says, oh, people leave for the day from their insurance office or their law office and the residents come home and they can have a guest and there will be street parking. And this, this tells me that we're going to have kids schlepping hockey bags four blocks away and, and the residents.
Two, two things, at day one, we don't have all that stuff. In the long-term, when we do have all that stuff, this is kind of the long-term scenario where we have the parking garage and most of their parking needs are met right adjacent to their, on their side or adjacent to their side. And, and the problem we have is how do we get from here to there? And so we've drafted some conditions, we've had some back and forth trying to say, well, how, because the, the parking structure's very expensive and to build that upfront is a difficult thing to do when you don't have, you know, that, right off the bat. And so we've tried to design some conditions to monitor the parking and to provide additional parking as the situation develops.
Well, it looks to me like there's going to be a lot of activity which will generate a lot of revenue for Ranch Ice, which would then build that parking structure.
Well, I was kind of wondering where the trigger was, so I, I mean, we, we have places for, and I think Randy mentioned earlier, three, potentially up to three garages if need be, is that what I remember?
Good evening, Randy Goodson with RC Superior. Yeah, well, we have three primary garages that we've already planned. We are also looking at multiple blocks where we'll have additional parking, subterranean or structured. So in the PD amendment that was approved, all of the blocks in the town square area, which is Planning Area 2, all of those blocks are eligible to have a parking structure, either below ground or above ground or both. And, and so there will be several structures. The pursuant to our development agreement, we're required to have one parking structure. And pursuant to the PD amendment, we're required with every FDP to do a parking demand calculation based upon the spreadsheet that is really just a placeholder with estimated numbers of square feet of buildings and things like that. But the PD says that that spreadsheet, which is on CS 1.2, I believe, 1.1, that, that spreadsheet will be replicated and produced with every future FDP and it will show on a cumulative basis all of the square feet resident of every category and what the parking requirement is for that category. And it will produce the parking that we're required to show on each FDP. This is the first FDP with any buildings on it. In anticipation of this FDP coming in, the FDP that's already been approved for just horizontal improvements in Main Street, we included parking in that FDP so that the Ranch Sports Complex could include on a cumulative basis the parking that's on the left under column E and F, the 415 spaces. So they're able to show cumulatively that there's 415 spaces that are going to be available day one. And they're, they're showing that pursuant to the PD, we're required to have 469 spaces. And so the, and then the issue there is that the, as your staff was identifying, the Ranch Sports Complex with all the different athletic activities, needs to build up those activities and they're expecting to peak in three or four years. And so we worked out with your staff a monitoring program where the parking spaces will be monitored and if it seems that they're exceeding, the Ranch Sports Complex is exceeding their growth and the spaces are being used, then we'll bring those spaces on very quickly. We want to make sure that people don't get frustrated that they continue to come here. We have a lot of places to put temporary parking. The PD amendment contemplated, and a lot of our discussion contemplated, that as we're building out the project, we will be moving on temporary parking. And there's, it doesn't make any sense to us to start building parking structures that are very, very expensive to build before there's tax increment in place, when we have all this other land nearby where we can put in temporary parking spaces. And the PD contemplated temporary parking spaces. So, so that's how we've approached it. We will, in working with staff and with the Ranch Sports Complex ownership, monitor the, the parking availability. But again, at this point, the only thing that's in the entire project is this application. With future applications, there'll be additional parking.
Let me finish then. So, and I don't know whether to ask you, Randy, or to ask Alex, but I thought that the conceptualization around parking and the parking structures was to create that general sense of parking that would be needed for people in the town coming for events and wanting to spend time here and spend time at businesses and things like that, whereas it, now we've got perhaps a significant part of our allotted budget, you know, TIF budget for, or whatever, for a parking structure, being provided in a fairly dedicated way to this one entity, which then makes me wonder if that now sets a precedent that if another entity came in and wanted to build something sizable, are we supposed to now provide yet another parking lot for them because now we're providing it? It's sounding to me like we're kind of mixing missions here, especially around parking, because it's sounding to me like we're now already taking parking that was supposed to be more for the whole general purpose of the town center and it's getting very focused towards specifically this entity.
Okay, so what Ranch Sports has provided us is a detailed shared parking analysis, looking at time of day, day of the week of what their parking needs. And the 469 is their maximum parking demand, usually on, on those weekends, whenever they have their, you know, usually on weekends is when kids are off and they're all filling up the places.
That's the, that's the entire building, Cornerstone, Impact Sports.
Right, and remember that their busiest time is on weekends, Cornerstone's busiest time is during the week, so we take all that into account. Let's say an officer, office user comes in, well, their busiest time is during the week, you know, during the week, so we can look at their demands and Ranch Sports demands and see if, if during the peak op, the office space peak demands, whether there's any, you know, excess capacity here for, to satisfy that use. So that's the type of things we'll be looking at, at the future. This is the first user we've had and, you know, here, here's the long-term, here's the short-term, and we're going to evolve into, you know, providing this parking over time. What we don't want to do is provide, try to kill the project with an expensive parking garage right off, right off the bat. We want to try to use the land we have and, my concern when I first saw this, they're going to, and the demand, they're going to fill us up right away. And so we better be prepared, how do we get 469 on-site at day one? And so I think that's what I was looking at. Here's 415 on-site, there's no other user, so, but we still have a deficit. And let's show, you know, another area, and I, I think Randy knows there's plenty of areas where he can provide space pretty quickly. And so our monitoring program says when, when you reach 80% of this capacity, 80% of 415, Ranch Capital, you've got to start building some, some new parking, some temporary parking somewhere. The other thing we're going to study during that period is what, what is the actual demand for parking by, by Ranch Sports, because this is all theoretical. And so we'll be monitoring that based on their programming and more actually seeing with parked vehicles out, out in the field, what their actual parking demand is.
Okay, other questions? Commissioner Dozel?
A comment, I guess, on the STC, the Spirit Town Center PD Amendment on, as you said, Randy Goodson, CS 1 dot 1 says that one parking space for every 400 square feet of recreation area, which would be 400 spaces just for the ice rink itself, ice facilities, and then one space for every 330 square feet of office space, which is 80,000 square feet in Cornerstone, which would be 244 spaces. So the, the idea was that we should have 644 spaces for this building. Now, that again is the, the vision or the concept of what was agreed to in the PD amendment. And so as you reference on CS 1 dot 1, so 644 spaces would be the maximum we'd be looking for, for this facility, for the square footage size, and we're talking about 450, like 200 square spaces less. Now, I know that's not on day one, I understand that, and.
Your numbers are off a little bit. I did a detailed calculation, then you could go.
Hold on, you need to go to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
No, I understand. No, I actually did a calculation based on using the PD, calculations for recreational area, office and so forth. And when I broke it down based on the actual square footage inside the building, we actually needed 519. And so I build out, the 491 is right there, real close to where we need to be.
Okay, well, I took it right off of the long sheet, so the square footage, but I, you know, we, we don't have to quibble with that, we're talking about, we're off 100 or maybe 200 spaces.
I think we're actually closer than that, I think we're closer. And, and I've kind of worked with Alex and with Luke and have kind of looked at their numbers and what they're proposing, I think makes a lot of sense.
So I, I don't have a concern at the beginning either because, you know, you'll build up the space and there's nobody else in the town center at the beginning, but eventually we're going to need 500 spaces, it looks like, everybody's in a general agreement, 500 parking spaces for this facility that we're reviewing tonight.
That's generally where we're at, 491 to the 500 number, right in there. And, and the way they've done it and the way they're breaking it out, I think it makes a lot of sense because I think it addresses, Commissioner Rochelle's question, you know, essentially, you have Cornerstone, they're going to be working during the week, I mean, it's a medical facility, so they're primarily during the week. Then we have the Ranch Sports, which is primarily on the weekends. And so there's going to be a trade-off on a lot of those spaces.
That's not, that's not exactly.
Well, I definitely have.
5:00 AM to 2:00 AM every day, except 5.
But, but, but keep in mind, it's obviously a little bit lighter when kids are in school or people are at work. So, I mean, it's, while there are people that are there, it's not the same as, you know, 7 o'clock at night, but luckily for us, Cornerstone isn't busy at 7 o'clock at night.
Right, right.
So, so we have a nice, a nice match in terms of how our usages kind of line out.
I'm not, again, I don't have as great of a concern about the number, because I think you're going to have the number of spaces when you build the permanent parking garage on Lot 3, as it says in our document, that RC Superior plans a permanent parking garage on Lot 3 to provide enough permanent parking spaces for our project. So as soon as you do that, then I think we'll be square, we won't have a problem.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I don't think it's in anyone's benefit to have a facility where people can't find parking, because that's one of their biggest, you know, next to bathrooms, next to toilets. That is the second thing.
Well, that's the second place they go, you go to the bathroom.
Yeah, exactly. So I don't think, I don't think it's anyone's intent to, to have that. You know, I feel pretty comfortable with our 469 estimate and then, you know, the special event deal where, where things go. I've, I've watched this for, you know, the last six years as to how it goes and it, it's pretty, it lines out pretty well. I mean, I, I can tell by hour how many people are going to be out there for, for the most part.
My last comment about this would be that the parking garage, as it said here, is for their project, you know, our project that we're talking about here. It's not really a public parking garage that we're talking about, it's spaces that will be primarily used for the, the ice and the, the ice.
Definitely will be a public parking garage, it's just have people close to us.
For use by the, yes, okay.
So, you know, obviously our customers will be, you know, tend to park there, but there, there isn't going to be any type of requirement that other customers can't park there and, you know, if there's something built right across the street there, they probably will park there, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCollum?
Well, I, I think Commissioner Ripmester's concern was, and, and my, a little bit of mine, is it's not so much that there will be adequate parking for your facility, but I have a sense, and I'm guessing you guys must, that this thing's going to kind of take off. I'm sort of expecting, just, I mean, looking at this facility, it's a beautiful facility, I think it's going to attract people and it's going to attract them quickly. And as we build out Phase 2 of the town center, then, I mean, ensuring that, that we have adequate parking for those new businesses that are coming in, probably right on the tail end, is, is, of, of this being completed, I, I don't know what your schedule is, but my, my guess is it's going to go faster than you think. I mean, that, just the excitement that I'm hearing about this area, and so, you know, just ensuring that, that we don't miss the boat on the parking. I mean, a lot of us were, you know, we, we looked at Costco and went, oh my God, that's just an insane amount of parking. But I'll tell you what, it, it, it just blows, it just, it just blew my mind how quickly, you know, we filled up, I don't know how many hundreds of spaces there are, and even Target, which is, is an underperforming target in the country. So, you know, I think everybody knows that parking is a big issue and it sounds like we have a plan in place to keep a close eye on this to ensure that, that we have adequate parking, so. And I think we'll probably harp on it at every FDP to make sure it, it gets dealt with, so.
Yeah, I don't know what the mechanism is here because it's, it's kind of a, a hope and a prayer when that, that gets realized based on what we see tonight.
No, it's 80%, there's a, there's an audit that happens, what is it, once a quarter? So, once a quarter on a Friday evening and a Saturday afternoon, there'll be an audit that, to basically walk around and, and count vacancies in there. And as soon as there's an 80% number is hit, then there's got to be more parking.
Okay.
So we do have triggers in place to. My other question is, is around the, the elevations and setbacks, which there's some concern about them going higher than we allow in, in this PD. Can, can we bring up the, or can you use that, that's fine, just to help me understand what, what components we're talking about that are actually, we've got, highest point is 10 feet higher than the height limit stipulated in the PD, and that doesn't include a tower element? Can you kind of point that out with a laser and let me visually see that?
Yes, I'm Bob Crowe, DSP Builders, will be the contractor for it. Just looking at the elevation, you can see that it steps down, okay? Because that site just drops right down from the south to the north, and even though we're bringing in a lot of fill, there's still three elevations there. You start at the hockey rinks at 100, you drop down to the soccer at 95 along the safe slash, and then you drop down to the medical, which is at 90, okay? So as you look at the elevation, you can see how it steps down. The point that we're talking about, the high point, it's referred to, is right there on the tower element of the medical building.
So that's the tower element being four to five feet, so that the highest point being 10 feet higher than the height limit, that's that, that's that building itself? And then the tower is four to five feet above that, is that?
Correct.
Okay. And the building mass in this portion, the medical office portion, is eight feet over the height limit? So that's the whole mass of that building, of the Cornerstone building?
Correct.
Is basically eight feet. Is basically eight feet over our height limit?
Right.
But that thing, but.
But it steps down a ton foot, right.
About 10 foot.
So when we're looking at it in proportion to the rest of it?
It should be.
It doesn't look like that.
Okay. All right. Okay, and I'm cool with that. Then the other, Fred, you just, you just mentioned that regarding landscape, parks open space and landscaping, that it wasn't clear whether the walkways are included in the landscape calculation. Should we have that?
Uh, they are not.
They are not?
They are not.
Okay, all right. Okay. That's all I had.
Okay, other questions?
I have a question about, uh, that it stated and it's shown that there's going to be a majority of flat roofs. And I know that we have had three-foot, heavy, heavy, wet snows that hit us in March and April. And I wonder what kind of analysis has been done to come up with this design that says this will be fully robust when we get those three-foot spring storms?
Well, I think I should clarify. The majority of these roofs are not flat. The roofs that are flat are on the medical office building. There's a parapet that extends high enough to cover the rooftop equipment for all of the medical building. The center core of the ice rink.
Yeah, I'm just going by what it says right here, the majority of the roof is flat.
Right. Let me just explain. This section, right through the center of what we call the core of the building, that's a flat roof also. And the reason for that, with a high parapet, it's designed to hide all the equipment for the ice rinks, the makeup barriers, the HVAC and everything else.
Okay.
The other roofs that we see, an indoor soccer impact and everything, are sloped roofs. Okay? That's a standing seam sloped roof. Obviously, when we have a, a span right here of, you know, 160 feet, 110, 120 feet, those are big open areas. So those are sloped roofs. So you're really looking at a flat roof here and a flat roof right here. And obviously, they're designed to carry the snow loads. And they, they will be, you're right, they're big flat roofs. They, they're going to hold snow up there, but they're designed to hold.
Okay. I don't know if you want to modify that statement or something, but when that state, you know, the majority of the roof is flat, and that, that kind of jumped out at me.
Okay. Well, again, you know, the, and I would just say that some people consider the sloped roofs, because they're, they're, they're anywhere from a 1% to up to a 2% slope, because all of them vary a little bit, a lot of people would consider that a flat roof. And because you expect to see a much steeper roof on a lower roof. But if these, if these roofs, with these bands, had a 5 or 6% slope on them, I'd be over the height limit everywhere. You just can't do that. And, and the cubic feet that we have to condition inside, it, it just wouldn't work. So a lot of people would see that, that roof and say, well, Jesus, it looks flat to me. Well, it isn't really. It has a slope, so.
Okay. And I have one other question about, um, providing for storm drainage. So will there actually be drains on the street so that as, in particular, snow melt starts to make its way down the street, that it actually has a subsurface place to go and is not just merely staying on the surface? Because what we have found in, in many places is that if it's got nowhere to go, it will just start ponding up and then you end up with an ice skating rink outside, like Bob wants.
Well, the, the street does have a storm system, and we've done underground from ours. So that, you know, we don't want ice skating rinks outside of the buildings either, okay? So we're taking all of our roof drainage and we're putting it into the storm system and then into the retention pond.
But, but also from the street, or is that, okay, from the street also, it will go subsurface? Okay. Okay, great.
Okay, other questions of the applicant? Okay. Any staff presentation?
Well, I'll just make a, I'll just make a few remarks that, because most of the staff's comments and verbiage is in the staff report. All right? And basically, I think, from the staff's point of view, we looked at, this project is a, a large project. We're dealing with a large arena building, basically. And, um, we looked at it for its uniqueness in, in many ways. And this building has got a lot of, of architectural statements on it, you might say, that basically is going to set it aside from most recreation-type buildings of this size. So we recognize that right off the bat. And we also, there's a fair amount of uniqueness here, so that's one of the objectives of a PD, is to come up with some unique aspects to the, to plans, whether they be a small or a large FDP, DFTP. And that's what the whole, this kind of flexibility gives us the ability to, to have a nice project. Also, it was helpful that we, in terms of working with, dealing with this building, we had, only a short time ago, had dealt with the Streets and Utilities, uh, FDP, which you all looked at. And so we had, um, we had the patterns that were set by that FDP. We looked to make sure that they carried over on both sides of the streets, because although Ranch Capital would be building the street up to the curb, everything after the curb is, is in, is in this group's responsibility. So we wanted to make sure that there was at least some, there was symmetry with the trees, and there are to a large degree, symmetry with the pavings and the pavers and so on. We, we looked at the, the circle drive is, is an interesting piece. Uh, it leaves an island and there's pedestrian access across it. And there's, uh, basically, the parking in there is limited, and that was a suggestion of staff, in terms of the time that they can spend in on that circle drive. And because that will be useful for particularly parents who are dropping off their children, those that can go from the car, you know, to the, to the ice rink area, or whatever, they can, they can drop them off. Others, there's space there then right at the, at that circle drive, as well as along the west, or the east side of Recreation Avenue, there's the limited spaces, time-limited spaces there as well. And that will help parents who have to go inside with their, uh, with their children that need help in getting their gear on, whatever they need to do. So we worked on that a little bit. We've gone through the height part from, and our view of the height issue was that the main reason, one of the main reasons for the height limit is to aid in facilitating views from either US 36 or primarily from the community to the mountains. And this tower building is at the northeast or the north end of this, basically the north end of this project. And, um, and it also, the way we looked at it is it's only, probably takes up about a fifth of the length of the thing. Something on that order. I might be off a little bit, but it's on that order. So we're dealing with a minority area of the building that's exceeding the height limit. So in order to, and we are creating an urban project here, and so right off the bat, we end up with an office building, fundamentally, a medical office building, that, that is, has an urban character, which is, also carries over into the main arena itself. So, uh, we, we felt it was still within the spirit of the PD and the agreements we have about height. And so that's how we dealt with the height limit issue. Um, let's see, you, you've been through parking. I would point out that there is a, a sort of a gap a little bit here in normal FDPs. We usually get a sign program. They have said that they will, they are going to come back with the sign program. But we do, and staff asked them to identify the spaces on the wall, the general location on the walls, and the size of the spaces where their sign program, which we will look at in the future, where their signs can fit. Because there's a number of signs, not only the wall signs, but there's directional signs near the parking areas, there's monument signs in front, as well as along US 36. All of these things we need to look at, at their proposed design, so that when a actual sign permit comes in, you know, we've got something to, to fall back on, as to what's been originally approved in their sign program. I think we, as staff, had several conditions that we came up with after a review subsequent to when the staff report was put together. And I believe you have those in front of you. And so, um, we can talk about that as you get closer to your, just, your recommendation. And if you have questions about those, you know, we can answer those. But there's just five of them. So those are kind of some of the things that we felt we should have some extra, like conditions in the, in the recommendation.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and go through those? I think now it'd be fine to go through them.
Um, I might have overlooked it, but I didn't see any metal benches that we've asked for, and they are going to make some stone seating walls, particularly in the circle area. But basically at the entryways for both the ice facility, as well as the medical office building, because the medical office building's got a portico as well. And so there's always a possibility, people have to sit and wait for somebody to come by and pick them up, particularly if they've got a broken leg or something like that. But, um, so that was something we thought they might add in, in strategic places. They, as I think Commissioner Dozel pointed out, they have a fair amount of bicycle parking spaces. We need to know what kind of a bicycle rack they're going to use. I think on the last sheet, they had a number of, of graphic images of things. They just need to add to that. So we need to know what that trash bin enclosure looks like. We normally get an elevation sketch or, or drawing of that with measurements and so on. Um, let's see, sandstone seat walls. The seat wall itself needs to be designed, there are seating benches with a stone. It's not a seat wall, but it's a stone seat. Now, that was in the back on that last page, so they're adding those. They also mentioned seat walls, like we've talked about when we did the Streets and Utilities FDP, that, that kind of, of bench for people to sit on. The third one is, we, we need to get a final plant count in terms of trees and shrubs, so that we can compare it, and they, they need to set up a density chart so we can compare it to the PD. We had, staff spent a lot of time looking at the landscaping, but we didn't get a final, uh, a cleaned-up version of that until late last week. So we're, and they have said that they want, they will prepare that count in density for us. I'm not sure whether that can occur between now and when the board hears it, or whether we pick it up afterwards, as a technical comment. Four and five are from Alex's shop, and so I don't know, do you want to go over those?
Alex Arno, Nova Books Director. So the two conditions we, we wrote for the, the parking, first one was, counts of parked vehicles must be taken every quarter on a Friday evening and a Saturday afternoon. And we had it until the facility is fully occupied and programmed. If the number of parked vehicles exceeds 80% of the, the available supply, including on-street and parking lots, then the STC developer should commence construction of the additional 54 spaces to meet their parking demand, or some other parking facility.
Quick question. So that, is that in one count on some five nights? Is that over a period of 10 counts, that they're over 80%?
But we would probably do it, you know, probably over a, a three-hour period on an evening and maybe a four-hour period on, on a Saturday.
No, but I mean, if you.
I'll often, because.
Yeah, what, well, no. Yeah, I got, so you're going to do that once a quarter? So if a count comes up on, at, in the quarter, that will trigger it, that one count will trigger it.
Right. Or you could, you know, whatever things, you know, we, we just put something out there for discussion, and that, you know, they seem to think it was reasonable. They could comment on that. But some way of monitoring, you know, is there a parking problem? And we, we chose 80% to say, well, we don't want to wait till everything's full. When it gets to 80%, and we'll have quarterly calls, so we'll see if things are growing, then.
And then what will happen? So let's, let's say that happens, you go out there, you get 82%? Then what?
Well, we'll direct the, the developer to provide more parking.
Okay. So that has to be a staff direction?
Right.
Okay.
Then the, the last condition was, he, Luke mentioned that there'd be this jewelry league, and there's a bunch of seating in this facility for spectators. And so we're concerned that we have these events that just overwhelms the town center, overwhelms the town. So we want, when, and hopefully they're programming events, they know when they're going to be and they know about how many people. So we want them to do, uh, apply for a special, special events permit, where they come up with a parking plan, traffic control, shuttle service, or whatever they need to do, to provide for these spectators, you know, where are they going to park? And, and so we, we review that. Hopefully it'll do this one time and we can replicate it. But we want to, we want to have a plan in place to handle a bunch of spectators coming to the site.
Question, Alex. Do you, do you have any thoughts currently on where you would do the, the off-site parking for those special events? I mean.
Well, there's a number of, you know, the Superior Marketplace is one area where there's a lot of excess parking, so they may have to work out a deal, there's a parking ride. I mean, there's even across the street over at Cable Labs, I mean, there's spaces over there that could be walked with the, the new bridge and bike path. So there's a number of areas, they have to come up with a plan, show us that this is going to work. And then, you know, first couple of times, we'll see if it, it works. And if it doesn't, we got to, we got to adjust for the next time. But, and also, the developer doesn't want all these parked vehicles taking over every space in the development when, you know, that he has customer, other business customers and so forth. So for these large events, we want to have, have a plan in place to, to deal with a lot of, a lot of spectators coming in.
Alex, follow-up on that. So this condition four talks about until the facility is fully programmed, or fully occupied and programmed. But I think some of the questions here in my own is, what about years down the line? It's wildly successful. It, you know, it's just determined that 500 spaces is just not enough, and.
Well, when I wrote that, I'm going, well, how, how long do we have to monitor?
Right.
So I'm trying to come up with some language, saying, well, is this forever that we monitor? Or is there some other time that we put on it?
I guess, is there, is there any way to monitor it in the future and/or do anything? Or are we just?
Well, I think, you know, part of the town center, I mean, we're going to have other things coming in. We're going to have to do that, I think we're going to have to do this for a number of years to, because we have these other parking facilities that we need to determine when to build them. So there's going to be an ongoing monitoring program. But for Ice Ranch, we, we felt, well, once you get to their, you know, they have a number of leagues, and that's going to be repeated a number of times, how often do you need to, to go out and park for this use? Again, we put this out there, if you have any other ideas on how to word this, you know, we're open to it.
Are, are the garages being built? They can be extended higher than, than the three or four levels we're doing now? I mean, like I said.
Well, we have height limitations.
Are they designed so that they?
We have height, we have height limitations.
Yeah, but we can, I mean, it's up to us to change those if we need to. I mean, if we have a parking problem in town center, I mean, that's what we're here for. I mean, it might, my, the question is, I mean, are we, I mean, do we, should we be thinking about that? So if we are building these three-story parking garages, and, I mean, I've seen, I've seen buildings just add, add floors or add parking, and they have to be designed to do that. If we find out in three years, we build it for a three-story garage and the foundation's not able to support five, it would sure be nice if we could add two more. Are, are we thinking about that now? Can we, can, can these, can these garages be built so that, you know, if this is wildly successful, we could add two stories of parking onto it later if we so desire?
That's, again, Randy Goodson with RC Superior. That's a great point. We are working with a parking consultant in our engineering team and our internal staff to come up with a comprehensive, uh, parking plan, to identify where we can put parking. We're looking at putting a subterranean deck below the town square. We're looking at a number of blocks. Block 11 is an early block that's coming on. We've been evaluating, uh, Block 11 as, for having a, a subterranean deck level. And Block 7, Block 11 and 7 are the blocks on the other side of Recreation Avenue, on the west side of Recreation Avenue. And, and so that's something that we're looking at, so we can understand the phasing and we give ourselves flexibility. Well, I'll also add to this. Well, I'll also add to this analysis that we're doing, we'll look at the ability to over-engineer a deck or a parking structure so that we could add a couple more decks if need be. We'll look at the feasibility of doing that. It's a really good idea.
Okay. Any other questions of staff from the Commissioner?
Did I have something related to the capacity? Hang on. Excuse me, I'll come back.
Okay. If anyone else has any questions of staff, yes, Commissioner Dozel.
I did just remember my question. I'm sorry. So these seven, the special events that we're talking about, and the plan is, I mean, they have to come up with a parking plan. Does the town also have to take into consideration how we're going to prevent a spectator event, these seven spectator events, from taking over the town center? So that is, it is natural for people to want to park as close as they possibly can to the event that they're going to, and even though Cable Labs might be the direction people have to go, they're going to tend to fill up the town center first before they go somewhere where they have to be bussed across. So should we, as a town, be thinking about how do we prevent, or can we prevent, or at least discourage, parking throughout the town so that, you know, we're not consuming our spaces that are supposed to be supporting these other businesses during these special events? And do we have a way to think, do we have a way to even think about that? Does that make sense?
Well, you know, we certainly, well, that's why we imposed the condition to provide a special events permit, so they can provide those types of details to us. Where are they going to park? What's the traffic control? How are they going to ensure that those people coming are going to park there?
And not in these other places.
Right, right. So all of that will be part of the, and I, you know, if we had more time or whatever, we could work that out.
We'll have to figure it out. I mean, there's time to run.
So it's, you know, with the first event, we'll have to, you know, solve a lot of those problems as it comes in.
Absolutely.
And they have to work out some arrangements with, you know, some of the parking lot owners to use their lot, if that's what they're going to do, or they shuttle them in from someplace. So we're leaving it open, and at first the event will have to trigger all those, you know, things to be solved.
Commissioner Eaton?
And in reverse, once the town center is built out, there will be events at the town center...
Yes.
...that will require a lot of parking. So we have to think about that, too, as we look forward.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Dozel?
Question on the tax calculation, the sales tax calculation and the square footage as it relates to the letter that we received this evening from the city of Louisville. Can we document how the $45,000 of sales tax was calculated, and also the 40,000 square feet versus the 8,000 that Louisville is referencing?
Well, I think Mr. Taylor can answer that a little bit better. I mean, I haven't seen you counting that. I think there's probably some question that 8,000 square feet is what they're counting. So I think, I see that as, I think something's going to be worked out between the manager and the applicant here in terms of what is the number. I'm not sure how solid those numbers are personally, but then I'm not privy to that on a daily basis. Maybe Mr. Taylor can deal with that.
I have a little bit to that. You know, where Matt put that number, 40,000, I actually think that you could make the claim that that number should be closer to 135,000 as opposed to 40. I think the 8,000 that the city of Louisville put in there is just a random guess. They don't have any idea of what, you know, what space is programmed for what. If you, if you look at our space that's actually designated for, you know, like a pro shop or restaurant or impact sports, that sort of thing, where it's, where it's actually sales tax, you know, business, that number is 46,216 feet. And then, you know, the argument would be is, what is our portion of it is sales tax based? Obviously, our building is huge, so it's, it's a...
Does your, does your, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, go ahead. I was speaking out loud.
So what, so our deal with in terms of whether it's sales tax or not, really determines, just depends upon who is our customer. If our customer is a nonprofit customer, like Boulder Hockey Foundation, Boulder Hockey Club, they don't pay sales tax. If it's a for-profit customer, like our adult leagues or our shuttle programs, whatever, they do pay sales tax, and we admit it. So I went through, based on all of our estimates, and 57.15% of our customers will be paying sales tax who use our facility. So if you take 57% of the remaining space, that gets you to 135. Matt just put 40,000 in his estimate because, you know, it was easily, you could easily get to that 250. But then Louisville came back and said, we think it's eight. I think they're going to have a real tough time justifying that 8,000, and I think Matt has a pretty strong taste for, you know, north of 40.
Well, we, as a town, have to justify what it is, or document what it is, because we have to, Superior has an agreement with Louisville. So we have to come back, Louisville isn't justifying anything, we have to justify it. So, but the 8,000, it looks like to me, and I just saw this tonight when we came here, they're only counting the pro shop, the coffee shop, and the kitchen grill, which, you know, probably isn't very big. I mean, it was hard to decide how big the kitchen grill, I couldn't even tell that. If it's a big restaurant, that's bigger than 8,000 square feet. So then the, I think what we have to do is, it seems to me what would be, what we have to do is, we can't just say, because it's non-traditional sales tax generation. It's not like you're selling products or selling food off of the entire square footage of the ice rinks themselves. You're getting some kind of a service fee that has tax applied to it, is that what you're saying? You actually can charge sales tax for the services that you provide through the ice rink?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we do. I think it's part of our hourly rate is, is when we have a non, when we have a for-profit customer, they pay sales tax, and when we don't, then they don't.
Okay. I would like to see that better understanding from staff about that, of what is the sales tax generating capability? How did the $45,000 of annual sales tax after Louisville has received their share? So that would imply that there's $90,000 of sales tax at least, at a minimum, coming out of the annual layout of that. And I'd like to see the calculation for that, and I think we should document that as we make our recommendation to the town board, so we understand what we're moving forward to. Does that make sense, what we're saying?
Yeah, per Matt's direction today, those numbers are strictly estimates. They will be reevaluated once the users come forth, and those numbers will be kept up to date and evaluated over time. So those are just estimates based on anticipated users at this point.
Yeah, I'm not questioning the numbers as much as the calculation of the numbers, so that we can, you know, reasonably explain back to Louisville.
Yeah, and I sent that over to Beth today.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, so she has that, and I think that should be, you know, maybe we'll need to tweak it a little bit, but I would, I would expect that that should be sufficient to present our case.
Right, okay. And help them understand how you actually generate sales tax, because I don't, you know, it's new to, it's new.
Sure.
Rather than just a regular retail space. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to audience. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this matter? Okay, seeing none. Any final comments from the applicant? Okay. Anything else before I close the public hearing? Okay, public hearing's closed. At this time, we will have commissioner discussion. At this time, we cannot have further questions of the applicant or staff, so it's just discussion amongst the commissioners. And this is also the time where we would craft a list of conditions and so on, we'd like to pass forward. Anybody want to dive in? Start?
I've got a list of items that I'll just, we'll just articulate them, and then we can, okay, so we've got some staff recommendations, which are seating up, up front, the pickup area, I think, a left seat wall, and stone seating. You said there were five, I've got six. Though we need to know the type of bike racks that they're going to use, the trash bin enclosures and how they'll look, the final plant count, trees and shrubs, the vehicle count each quarter, and then the special permits for spectator events, those were the staff recommendations. So the issues that I've written down as the building height, you know, was a question, are we okay with that? Parking, do we need to, do we want to, we need to say anything in our recommendation report? And then the discussion about sales tax and how that's being generated, and do we want to put anything in those recommendations? Is there anything else that I missed?
You'd brought up the, or there was some discussion about the US-36 bikeway connectivity or lack thereof, and a question came up in my mind, should we, should we pursue that a little bit further? Do we want to have a little better defined, I mean, it's a major facility, and you've got a major bikeway next to it, it just seems like it's a natural to have them connecting at some point.
It seems like we need to connect at some point. I'm just trying to figure out whether it applies in this PD, maybe Fred can answer that. Does it fit in this PD? Did it belong in the, in the, the FDP for the, for the streets?
Yeah, I mean, I can address that a little bit. There are accesses a little bit northwest and southeast of this particular site. Once you get around the disdrained pond and so on, there's accesses there. And as the applicant pointed out, there's a retaining wall right there close to US-36. So, and that's really the only part of the site that is, is right there at the corner is where it is close to US-36, because the highway goes in at a diagonal, and this site's, you know, is moving in a different direction. So they're going to have to use those accesses that we pointed out on the PD in terms of the bike, the bike gland. They're going to have to use those, and one of the things the town can do is put, you know, direction signs, that if you want to go to the ice rink, the ice center or the sports center, you can, it can be a little directive sign, just like we might have anywhere along any of our bike paths. And that would be coming both from, if you're going south and you're at the north end of the deal, the north end of the PD versus, as you're getting towards what I call the southeast end of it. So as I recall, there's two access points. And Alex nods his head, yes, there's two access points that you can get from the bike path into the PD, but it's, it's not direct, because you've got a pond, and then you've got this wall, and it makes it difficult to just have a direct access. Besides, if you did have a direct access, you end up in one of the parking lots, or you might end up on that drive. None of those are very advantageous, so that's the way I would deal with that.
Okay. Commissioner Dozel?
It seemed to me it would make more sense as it gets more built out, and we create, you know, other bike lanes that are anticipated in there, that we keep that in mind and work that in, because I don't think it's, really seems right to ask the applicant in this case, in this FDP, to figure out how to connect with CDOT's, you know, bikeway, which would be a great thing, but it's not really their requirement to do that. I think it's more ours as a town to try and figure out how to make that conducive.
I would agree with that, but I might request that we add maybe a separate agenda item at a future meeting to look at that ahead of the game here, and just see if we have any thoughts on how to, whether we're comfortable with how it looks now, and whether there's anything that we think can be done.
Is that something that the parks and the Pro Stock could take a look at for us? Or, I'm not sure what the...
Yeah, that's a possibility.
You know, to ask them how, and when would be the appropriate time in this whole build-out of the STC, of how to bring that more effectively into the downtown area, which would include, you know, getting them into the ice area, ice facilities.
We have a PD, I mean, we have a PD, so we know how it's going to look, so I would think that that could be looked at immediately. I think it'd be great. I recommend that, go ahead, Pro Stock.
Okay. I'm good with that. We can strike that.
Okay. A couple other things that we mentioned was the signage plan, which I think Fred mentioned, and I had also asked about, I think we should put that down, too, that we really need to understand how all the signs, whether they're on the building or outside the building, and directing traffic and things like that.
Just to follow up on that, so the pictures in the packet show signage. And Fred, you've mentioned you want them to put that somewhere. Is that, is that where?
What they show is what I call placeholders. And they, the spaces are dimensioned, so there's a total square footage on any one particular space. And, but they're only generally located on the wall, and since that, they're not dimensioned, it has to be X feet from the top and whatever from the side, whatever. So they have the ability to move that around on the, on the building. The graphics of the sign, you know, is another issue that we can look at. The monument signs and the directional signs, which stand on the ground, we look at, we would want to look at the design for those.
Are they placed with those?
They're on, yes, they're noted on the signage plan that we had. It's also, I think, they are identified on the site plan, those locations for those little, either larger or smaller monument signs. The other outstanding piece, I think, was the public art, and I'm not sure if it's public art or if it's their ability to, I don't know what kind of arrangement they have on that, but there's, in that circle, there's a spot for some kind of art, whether it's a skater or, I don't have any clue, but...
It looked like hockey skaters.
Yeah, but at any rate, I'm sure there's going to want to be some discussion about what that piece is. But at any rate, all that could be part of a signage plan that we would look at it, I would assume, as a, in a future review and approval.
Okay.
Because all they are placeholders, because I'm sure the graphics for the signs are not going to be this print mode that they show on the building as it's, you know, now, but at least we know they want to have signs in the building, here's where they generally are, here's their sizes, their max sizes, you know, my assumption they would have to fit within those boxes.
So we do have that information to look at today, at least from what they think their max sizes are, and probably provide some feedback as to whether we think those are reasonable.
Well, I think it's kind of difficult to know, like what Fred was saying, if you don't know what the sign actually is going to look like, what material's going to be made of. Because if you look at the, if you look at that middle lower where it says ice rinks in big black bold letters, I don't think that looks very apparent.
No, agreed, but positionally and from a coverage standpoint, it's about all we can talk about today. Does that seem like a reasonable spot for it, and is it too big? Or, I mean, yeah, we can't go any farther than that.
I don't think we're going to decide that until we get the signage plan. Yeah. You need a schematic.
Unless we look at it and say, that's just too big.
I thought they were talking about that after the fact. You know what Fred was talking about? It was the review of the signage thing.
It is to come back to us.
Come back, yes.
It's to come back to...
It's got to come back to us, isn't it?
It does. But what we do have today, what Fred requested was everywhere they think they want a sign about maximum size that they would like, and put those on the drawings. So those are there today, so we have to decide whether we want to talk about that or put it off until the next, or until they actually bring the sign plan forward.
So, so have I missed the lighting plan?
No, I'm going to get to that. That was the next one I was going to jump on.
I'm looking, and it's like, what's not always going to be sunny in daylight? And I don't see any, any kind of lighting scheme, lighting pictures, any street lights?
It's in the picture.
It's in the big draw.
It's in the big...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's there.
So it's, so, okay.
It's in the, so confused, the long sheets.
Okay.
It's in the big draw, but the thing I would be concerned about with the lighting thing is this facility, if you don't watch this thing right now, PDI, or any other facilities, the rec center, there could be people out there using this facility at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. It's not your normal parking for retail photometrics plan, so you might want to be looking at that or recommending that, and more of a round-the-clock type usage. There are some other standards, I believe. The other one that was pushed big on this is this energy compliance, VR 3238 thing, that's important, it's a great feature. It'll have lower energy consumption here at Superior, like that feature, by the way, but that's a good idea. And that's part of the reason I like the elevation integration, was because those icebox cooler wall panels will fit in really good, that's a good technique with those bump outs, so. But I do think we should make those as part of the recommendations.
What's the condition? What's the condition, or what's the recommendation?
Usage of current energy code compliance standards is number one. Making lighting, photometrics.
I'm not understanding what we're asking them to do that they're not saying they're going to do.
Well, they're basically sparring it out, we want to make sure that's done. They don't have to do that.
I thought the conditions were to say to them to do something that they're saying that they're not going to do. So if they're saying they're going to do it, then they're going to do it.
Oh, I'd be one. Okay, I can see what you're saying. I'm just saying, this is still at the planning stage.
Right. Okay.
Well, it's, well, it is final, the final development plan, so, I mean, if they're stating they're going to do it, then they have to do it, if we, I mean, they have to abide by the final development plan ultimately.
It's not in the document itself, it was in the presentation, so.
I see what you're saying.
It's not documented in the FDP.
Here's the thing, is that there are going to be certain energy conservation requirements the town has, building code requirements, and so if they comply with that, it's really not part of the actual plan, whether they're going to be green or not, that's going to be their, their call. It's really, the actual plan is more relevant to the land, the building plan, like the overall look. If they're going to build with energy compliant stuff, that's really their, their decision to do it or not.
Well, I'm saying, recommendation.
Well, I mean, we're, we're making a recommendation for our board, final condition.
Okay.
So, I think it kind of gave you on the scope of what you're actually looking at here, as far as whether it's energy compliant or not, they're going to comply with the town standards. So if they do, then they're going to be in compliance, if they don't, then they're not. And if they, and if they fall through with what they're presenting to do, that's great, if they don't and they meet the town requirements, that's still okay, because that's the criteria you're looking at. Are they going to be compliant with the town codes, and are they compliant with the PD? So, I wouldn't get into too many details about whether it's energy efficient or not, because they're going to have to meet our minimum standards anyways.
Saying 32 and 38 is probably exceeding the energy code. That's what I'm saying.
Tom, you mentioned the lighting plan, and.
Right. Your lighting, your set lighting on your parking, parking areas, they're kind of different standards for, like, retail parking, like we got at Costco, Target, this is probably a little bit above that, so we need to be looking at lighting as it relates to make time usage facilities, that's what you've got here.
Can you elaborate on that, Fred? Do we have any, we need to cover a 24-hour facility, and is there a different lighting standard?
That's what it is.
Well, from a time standpoint, it's, we would expect that the parking lots are lighted while there's occupancy. All right, and that's going to be way into the wee hours of the morning, according to their schedule, plus starting up at whatever, 4:00 or 5:00 AM in the morning. So it's, it's like, I think you mentioned 20, or, yeah, like on the order of 20 hours in the day. So, the lighting that's posed is, is not of a real bright character, which is what our town standards basically are aiming at. And they're pretty much sticking, you know, within that, there are some hotspots right under the lights, but that, their range of hotspots over what our number is, is really small. So, so it doesn't, you know, and the, and the lights are compliant with the design guidelines, in terms of height, because this is a parking lot light, and, and not a pedestrian walkway light, and it's not the same as the street light. We also had them in that, in those long drawings, those large drawings, there's a composite drawing of the lighting that's being built or for the street itself, which is being done by RC Superior, versus the lights that are basically, that light the sidewalks are from the building itself. And those, we did a composite, and the backsplash from the streetlights is not extensive at all. So that, you don't end up with, you know, these strips of long bright spots, because you've got a wall light versus black splash from the streetlight. Everything seemed to work out pretty good from, from our, from my observation of it, so we didn't make any real comments on the lighting plan at all.
Well, I think Tom's point is that it's a little bit different when people are walking out at 2:00 in the morning. I mean, just, different issues exist, you know, from midnight to, to 5:00 AM than, you know, during typical retail nighttime hours, 5:00 PM to 9:00 or 10:00 PM, you know, the likelihood.
Well, I'm not sure if you can increase the wattage, or if that's what you're, where you're going.
No, well, I, I, I think, you know, ensuring that, that it is safe at 2:00 in the morning, and doesn't need to be, do our standards handle that, and do we care, and, I mean, I.
Well, the standards that we have in place basically are safe levels of lighting, and they're not over brilliant, they don't create a lot of glare, and all of those, those kinds of things. And so, those are our standards. We've done that a long time ago in terms of having quality light, but not overbearing light, we went through all that.
But we've never had a 24-hour facility, I think, is.
No, but we've had late, there's been late stuff over at the marketplace, I mean, when things are really hopping over there, or during the Christmas season or wherever, it's later. I'm not sure there's a lot of difference going from.
And you say that.
11:00 or 12:00 o'clock to 2:00 AM in the morning. The lights will be on.
And they'll be similar to the light, the lighting that we see in.
The marketplace?
Marketplace.
Well, they're all, these lights that, you know, are either LEDs, or they're, they're hell-eyed lights, so, you know, they're, they're like those over there, there's kind of a box, it's a box, recessed lens, or at least even flush lens, they're downward cast, it's all that.
I don't, I don't know how we can come up with any kind of condition other than.
I was talking about cameras and safety.
Okay, okay. Okay, I think we're getting towards the list here, anybody got anything to add to our, our list?
I have a couple of comments, and then, I don't know if it'll add to the list, but a couple of comments. I really like the cornerstone elevation view, the cornerstone building itself, I think that looks great. But then I look to the other end down here, and it looks like a loading dock building, to the, when you go to the south. So you've got cornerstone on this end, and you come this way, you know, it's, you see a lot of that gray metal roof, because there, you know, there's like 115,000 square feet of gray metal roof across the whole building, if I calculate it right. And then you see what those boxes, I'm not sure what those boxes, what the tiles on the front of the boxes, but this end down here, the design kind of loses a little bit, as we go from a great northwest corner and a less quality southwest view. So, I don't know if we can make some kind of recommendation about that or not, but it just seems like we, you know, it, it just looks again like a great big box.
I think.
Yeah.
I think part of what you're seeing is two different renderings. I mean, one's, one's done as a, more of a picture, and then the other one is done more as a.
It's down there too, you can see, Clint, you probably can't see it, but down there it is too, more of a picture rendering, which is a nice picture, but you still lose a little bit, I think, of, it just, you see a lot of the gray roof, and, and I don't know how to resolve that, because it's a big building, you know, it's a great big building. And this building is a nice sized building, so I'm not sure that there's anything that can be done about that, but I would like to see if there was something other than just grayness of the roof, because we see a lot of gray roof, if you look at the top, where the top right hand, left hand, I'm sorry, even on the backside, I think that's the backside of the building toward 36. And then we see a lot more of the gray steel metal, or I guess it will be on this view here, on the elevations, we see a lot of the gray, and the south view here, south elevation views and things like that. So, and we see towers, which I'm not really too excited about, we have those in the marketplace, you know, towers are not to me things that make an architectural design or difference to the front of the building. If there would be some other kind of a way to create something beautiful, more beautiful, I shouldn't say beautiful, that's a bad word, more aesthetically pleasing perhaps. And I know it's hard, because it's a big building, but I would like, just like to see a little bit of more of a difference, rather than just grayness of the metal roof, and then the gray panels that are on the side.
So you're talking about this, and as well as in between.
And in the between, and then if you point your laser, think about, up on this, over here, you've got a lot of it, that's a south view, a south elevation view, and then up, that's the north elevation view, which will be facing probably, well, it's a north elevation view, I don't know what it'll be facing to, maybe the hotel someday. And, and then again, down here, this is on the front of the building, oh no, which elevation view does that say that one is, the swim school, okay, that's as, in the center, that's the front, when you come in. So, as you walk forward, on one side will be the stairs going up to the balcony, and then that's on the other. I just see a lot of grayness, and I'm not sure, it's more of a comment, I don't know if you can make, if we can make that into a recommendation, but.
Yeah, that's exact, I think that's exactly in a purview. And then I'm, now you've got me thinking there's what like four loading docks, and that's going to stick in my mind now.
I thought it looked like a loading dock. You know, when I look at the backside there, the east elevation view up there even.
On the top.
On the top, and the west elevation view with those four boxes that are built there, they make me think of, it's a loading dock warehouse.
So in the, in the picture though, that's here, right?
Yeah.
That's very different, these, these actually extend up over the roof line, and so I don't know which is.
Right, 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 now that's a good point, those look like.
So this photograph is, well, you know, we.
Well, I think that's because of the slope, it's, it's.
We can't take any more comment at this point.
No, it's, it, but.
These, these four right here, if you, and it's allowed to look at our point, they extend up over the roof line, whereas in the drawing here, they don't.
They extend over the front of the roof line, but maybe not the peak, because it, it isn't necessarily.
It'll depend on where you're standing, and, you know, this, these drawings, these drawings are lacking trees, they're, you know, material variation.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of things that, yeah. This, this doesn't look too bad, I mean, I guess if we wanted to say something, I mean, the photograph would be more representative of what we would.
Expect, because it's more with.
Representing this drawing here.
With more the look of this. So there isn't a lot of gray metal on the cornerstone elevation view, whereas you see much more gray metal on the rest of the elevation.
Yeah, but yeah, there's no, but there's no, the top metal is not, none of that is here, I mean, you've got some architectural character here, you know.
And there in the middle.
Yep, I mean, you do have some gray expanse, but it's not like this. Here, they show, it shows all the way gray to the ground, here you can see that almost a third of the way up, it's a, it looks like a stone face.
So, maybe the comment would be, just to be more clear about the difference of the surface character, and it should, the view, the vision is more similar to extension of the cornerstone look.
The cornerstone look there and the cornerstone look here are entirely different.
Well, again, I think they're, they're two different drawings.
Of course. Now, there's, there's no question about that, that is true.
Yeah.
But this has more's brick and.
This is much more aesthetically pleasing.
Than the metal.
Than that type of drawing.
Okay, so should, should the condition be build that, not then?
Yes, that's true.
In this look, that's more than building.
Right. Well, I mean, I agree with this, it's much more attractive, there's no doubt about it.
How can we reference these in a recommendation, I mean.
Renderings.
The, the renderings? Are these, yeah, photographic renderings, or?
Renderings.
They're what?
Renderings.
Okay.
Architectural renderings.
Yeah.
You also need to think that, as you approach the building from a distance, you're looking at it in kind of this view, when you get up close to it, you can only really see a straight view up to probably less than the first floor. So when you're looking up, and these facade elements that will overwhelm the roof, is the closer you get to the building, because of where you are on the ground. So it's, it's kind of hard to imagine sometimes, but that's, that's the way it is. These are just, these are architectural elevations, if you're looking straight at it, you're kind of suspended in there, you can see the whole thing, just straight on. That's different than what, where you are in reality, walking. It's an, it's an image that's, it's the same, but it's, the image is what's different. And in the rendering, what they've done too, is they've taken those support elements to the roof, and they've given them some kind of character. Where here, you get lines, they're just joints. That's all it is. That's what we're seeing.
Okay. Any other, any other condition?
The only question, I guess, Bob, Commissioner McCool brought it up about the heights, you know, the, we need to make a comment, I think, about the fact that it's over the 55 feet, foot height limit. I, I don't have as much of a problem with that area of the building, you know, the cornerstone building being over, as long as the board, not us, the commissioners, because it was really a lot of discussion with the town board about how high those, that building should be, you know, and I think I heard a lot of three-story comments, so that'll be up to them to discuss that. I don't have as much of a problem with that, and I understand the difference in elevation as it goes down, and I saw that on the drawing. I think I have a bigger problem with the facade, you know, this, with the monolithic view of that 635 feet along the backside of the building, but, so I don't have a problem as much of an issue. So I don't know if we need to, I don't know what the condition would be, or what the other feelings of the, but I'm not so. And I, and again, I guess I made a comment about the tower. The tower's a thing that's really over height, and I am, it, it looks architecturally, design-wise fine on this rendering here, it's not like a big piece of the building that's going to be sticking up over top of that.
Okay. So what, we have a list, do we want to?
Yeah.
Go through the list?
I think for purposes of, of passing on things to the town board, we need to perhaps come up with two lists, a list of conditions that is, things they should do, well, things they should do, and then on the, and the issues of building height, that, those sorts of comments should perhaps go in the cover memo, and say, planning commission is okay with building heights, given these points.
You're talking about concerns the planning commission might have?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
So it's like two different.
Concerns, comments versus conditions, does that sound like a good approach? Because I think we would like to communicate more than just our, our list of conditions, we'd like to.
So these last two discussions were really more concerns or comments?
Correct.
Right, okay, I'm with that, I think that's perfectly.
Yeah, and I think all of that should be passed on, just so they know that we talked about it, versus didn't talk about it. If it's not in writing, didn't happen.
So if we can follow my list, I'll keep notes as we go.
Okay.
And if it's.
And Jeff's going to make, our new protocol on conditions is that Jeff's going to make the list, and he's going to read it back to us, and we've got, so leaving this meeting, we have our list of conditions.
So so far, I have, I have no, absolutely no conditions other than the five that.
Okay, so, so we start with the list, you know, we start with the staff list of five conditions, is everyone good with that?
Yes.
As a starting point, okay. Then, we talked about building height.
Yes, and issues of our building height, and are we okay with that?
And that's not a condition, that's, that's a comment.
It's just a comment.
Signage plan, I think, was a condition.
Let's, let's kind of flesh out building height, so.
It's a condition if, if, I mean, it would become a condition if we decided that we weren't okay with it, I mean, it would become a condition, I mean, if we're just going to comment and say it's okay, then it's probably a comment, but.
Right.
It depends on what our answer is, as to whether it becomes a, any of these could become a condition.
Right.
But, so these are comments or issues that we have, that are either going to be passed along as just comments that, yeah, we're okay, or we're going to turn them into a condition, because we think something different has to happen, is that accurate?
Yeah, basically, if you're going to do a recommendation for approval.
Right.
Then it's going to be subject to conditions 1, 2, 3, whatever they are. And then if you want to say, okay, the rest of this needs to be looked at further on the town board, you want you to consider whatever else you want to add.
And we can, I mean, so all these comments, we probably wondered, there are comments, we thought about this, this is what we think, we have no conditions about it, but it was discussed at the planning commission level, we want them to see that, or we turn them into conditions, and.
Yes, because you're going to have a formal resolution with the conditions, and then you're going to basically be directing staff to provide a staff cover memo, noting other comments and concerns that you had that were turned into conditions.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
I'd understood, though, that the signage was, as, as Fred explained it, was a requirement or a condition to come back with a signage plan. That's what I had heard. So that's a condition, I think, is that we recommend this for approval with the condition that a signage plan be brought back for review.
Correct.
Correct.
My understanding is the applicant plans on presenting a formal sign. My understanding is the applicant plans are presenting a formal sign, a package at a later date anyways. So I think the only concern was, was that the, the actual document they submitted includes dimensions of certain signs on the, on the diagrams, right, Fred?
Yep.
So if you're approving the diagrams as written, you're gonna show, the signs can be of this size, as shown in the diagram. If they come back with a formal sign package to differ that, then they'll have to get approval of that separately. But if you do approve the plans, you're gonna be approving they can have a sign A, B, C, and D of this size.
Yeah, showing the in- these places as they're shown.
Right.
Yeah, that's why we need to talk about those.
That's gonna probably vary, because they're gonna bring you an actual formal sign.
So we could also come back and say that we are not necessarily accepting the signed plans as they are being presented today, and we don't want to approve those until we receive a full sign back. That would be, that would be an option as well, correct?
That was my understanding of what we were doing.
And they can...
Well, it isn't if we don't do it. I mean, we're...
Well, that was, okay, so that would be what I would think we should do based on what Fred recommended, was that we need a, the condition is that we need a signed planage in order to...
But we do, but, but we have a, we have an FDP in front of us that has, that includes a component of the signed plan, size and approximate position. If we don't, if we accept that, then what Jeff is telling us is that they, they can come back and present a signed plan with signs of that size in roughly those positions, because that's what we said, and they would be meeting the plan. So if we, we can also say, no, we're not okay with the signs as they are. We wanna see a full plan.
So let's, let's talk about that. I mean, do we feel...
Well, we have, so if we could follow, I mean, we don't keep jumping around, but can we do building height, and just, can we just go down this list of issues, and I'll do these?
Sure.
Or else we're gonna keep jumping around. So building height, I mean, we can do it. We'll show hands if there's an issue, you know, we'll be all okay with that.
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
Okay.
That's a comment, great.
Okay, so building height as a comment, planning commission's okay with the variance as proposed.
Parking is the next thing on my list as an issue or concern. Do we wanna take that any farther? Are we okay with how it is? Do we have any, go ahead.
The way it's stated in, in number four, I would like to have it say, counts of parked vehicles must be taken at least once every quarter.
Rather than, what does it say now?
Just taken every quarter.
It says one to per...
I, I would like the, like, let's say we get calls from people, and they say, I cannot believe what this parking is. So, but let's have the verbiage be open enough that we say, Alex, let's get another count going, instead of saying, well, we already took one this quarter.
So at a minimum, lots per quarter?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
And is that where we also wanna make, and maybe it's a comment that you brought up, Bob, about investigating design and engineering guidelines in the event a parking facility could or should go higher, or is that...
I'm good with making that as a, just as a comment that we...
As a comment, okay.
Disgust, and that, Randy, I mean, Randy mentioned they were gonna look into it. I, yeah, I think...
So that's...
That's the overengineering aspect.
Yes.
You don't know. That's a problem.
And then the overengineer parking structure. It's okay. The next thing on the list, what, is there anything else on parking that, anybody? Overengineer, I'm sorry, how's the, the 45K sales tax that holds in, how the sales tax is being generated and calculated? Do we wanna address that in our comments?
Comment or, comment or condition?
I don't know that it's, I don't know if we can, I don't feel like a condition.
It's just more like a comment, 'cause it's really a staff. I mean, I think it's a staff requirement of the town or superior. That would be my view. But we need to do that, particularly in light of the letter that was received.
And it sounds, it's...
Terminal valuation of the tax revenue.
Yeah, it sounds like there's a lot of moving parts on that as recently as today. I mean, that letter came in today. We just got some calculations from the applicant today, so I think, yes.
We can come up with a comment that documents...
Further documentation.
With better, yeah, more information.
Okay.
So does somebody wanna give us verbiage on that?
Are we looking at the, we're looking at the amount of square footage this retail sales tax generating pursuant to the IGA? Is that, so does the town staff have a formal or detailed analysis of that?
So are we recommending any more, is that our recommendation, any more detailed analysis of the, of the sales tax revenue compared to the IGA? Is that...
Analysis and documentation.
But it's a comment, not a...
Right.
Right.
It's just a recommendation, yeah.
Okay.
Recommend a more detailed analysis, and what was it, more detailed analysis?
And documentation, which is a word that Louisville was asking for. And it's both the square footage that generates retail sales tax, and maybe with a comment about how it's different than a normal retail environment, and also the $45,000, if we can show how that was calculated, the actual $45,000 of annual tax.
So is this gonna recommend a more detailed analysis and documentation of the sales tax revenue generated per square foot? Does that...
Yes.
Cover it all?
Right, because you'll get both the square footage and the...
And you're gonna change that by...
Retail settings.
Okay.
I would say directed at, addressing the concerns articulated by the city of Louisville, because that's really the goal, is to be able to give them a response.
To address the concerns brought forward by town Louisville.
The real issue here is, how do we pin ourselves down to a particular square footage as of this time period is difficult. You know, so I think, you know, the board maybe wants some more information about that, so they can actually make an informed decision. But whether they want to, you know, put a number on the FDP, I don't think that makes sense at this point. They're trying to bind ourselves to some actual square footage number, but to get more information about that makes sense. So maybe we could just say that town staff provides an analysis of the square footage. Now, I'm making a mess of this here. I've written it a couple times, sorry.
So, I mean, is this verbiage, I mean, I, I think that's all we're saying, which was, let me run it by you again, recommend a more detailed analysis and documentation of the sales tax revenue generated per square foot to address the concerns brought forward by Louisville.
Yeah, I mean, that's okay. Like, I mean, that makes sense.
And it's a comment. It's not a condition.
It's just a, yeah, it's just a comment that we think is important enough. I'm sure they will, too. Just, yeah, so it's, okay. The next item on the comments list was bike ac, bike access, and our recommendation was a pro-staff look at it. I think we should put that in as a comment, that we suggest a pro-staff look at access to the...
Well, I think we can discuss that a little bit further, and said it's in the P, bike lanes are in the PD, so I don't even know if we need to...
Of course.
Well, I don't, yeah, listening to Fred, I don't...
Retain law, who's you got that?
Yeah, I, I'd like that to be looked at more. I mean, to see if there's anything we can do to not, you know, route people like into the bridge down, and then down and underneath. I mean, I, I don't, maybe that's what it has to be, but, you know.
Okay.
That's good.
So comment.
Yeah, so comment would just be recommend that pro-staff look at bike access from Highway 36, bike corridor into the, into the SDC. Everybody cool with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Then there was a signage plan, public car plan, so that's a bigger discussion, I think.
Yeah, I think on the signage, we, we either need to choose, let's, you know, are we okay with the general sizes and locations as they're proposing, pending the further signed plan to come, or do we not wanna, basically not wanna touch it until the further...
I don't think we should do it. Now is not the time to do it, because we need more details.
Hold up, we're all talking at the same time here. So let's, maybe let's get a brief comment from each person on, you know, how, how you'd like to proceed.
I, I think we don't accept the signed plan as been presented, and we request that the sign, a new signed plan, address position, size, placement, and everything else, all at once. It's my thought.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Good. I guess I'm...
That would be also designed, 'cause I might even sign it included in here.
Yeah.
I would be okay with the location and positions as proposed, but that's my position, so...
I, I'd like to see it all wrapped as one, one plan, one presentation.
Okay.
No, I agree with that. I agree with what Commissioner McCool said and everybody else said.
So that's the condition, not a comment. We need to have that.
Okay.
I agree with the consensus, 'cause we don't have enough information. Nobody sizes these anyway.
Okay.
I don't have an office.
So that'll be a condition.
Okay.
That we recommend not accepting the signage...
As proposed.
Information as been presented in this, in the final development plan, and recommend that a full signed plan, including position, size, and location be presented all at once.
Design is an important part, yeah.
That a complete signed plan be presented all at once.
So if I worded it the way I was gonna word it, I'd say, it would be a condition.
Yep.
Because signage shown in the FDP is not approved, and all signage must be presented for future approval in a formal, complete signed plan.
Perfect.
Okay, good.
It's not recommended to be approved. They only recommend...
Yeah, even the, yeah, these are gonna be conditions, though. So it's gonna be, it's gonna read that way, 'cause everything else reads similar to that.
Okay. The lighting plan was the next thing on the list. There were different standards or typical that Tom brought up. Do we wanna put anything in regarding the lighting plan? Are we okay with it as it is?
Sounds like the town standard, you pretty much said, set in stone. I just use the phrase.
So no comment, no comment on the light, lighting plan?
I guess not.
Okay. Then there was the, the other one was the energy code compliance, I think is similar, which kind of have, what we already have.
Well, they're both, they're...
They're above it, yeah, we have. Okay, so no, no comment about that?
We appreciate the fact that they're above.
Yeah, the, other than, yeah, we, we noticed, and we think it's great that they do it. The more, the merrier.
Yes.
And then the last comment was the, that the look and feel in the architectural renderings represents the design that we're approving, rather than the elevation views, but that there's a, and I guess the, the concern is, is that the elevation views look quite different than, than the architectural rendering, so want to ensure that the renderings are what we find acceptable. Does that sound?
Mm-hmm.
That not, okay, that's it. That's our list.
Did we, earlier, we talked about landscaping on the backside, additional landscaping. I think it was in one of the, in the document or the report, too. Do we wanna make a comment about that? Because there can't be any landscaping. There's no space for it behind the building. But we would like to ensure that there's adequate landscaping to buffer kind of from 36 to the back of the building in that detention pond area.
Well, what I heard him say was there, there's gonna be detention pond landscaping, and that they kind of matched it with, there are some shrubs and trees right up against the building.
Very sparse, it says. I don't know what that means.
They said it was gonna be provided by SDC, so town center was gonna do that work, not it's not part of the...
Right, right. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be there. Okay.
Right, right, right.
All right, fine with that.
They were saying that beyond, beyond that little space they have, the SDC would be doing more landscaping.
And we've already done that FDP, or you have in ways, so about that detention pond. Okay.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Isn't there a 10-foot wall that comes behind?
There is a wall. There's a retaining.
Oh, let me, let me, I can, I don't know, maybe I shouldn't open this can of worms, but the pond, the, there's some trees below the slope of it. There's trees, there's tree line in there. And then on top of the pond, there's a, there's a bunch of shrubs, and I think the axisway goes into there as well, but what, you know, I think, you know, and then they had, they had diagrams showing how you look at, how you look across the pond from 36, and you really don't see much of it because of the way it's, it's set. I think the only thing to do is to, is to somehow, maybe through staff or wherever, we, we work with basically our, you know, our senior superior, and, and talk about whether or not we could get some taller plants to grow along that edge of the pond. They have a fair amount of planties along that top of that pond, and then also down slope from, you know, into the pond. So we could, you could recommend, maybe a comment is that, maybe spend a bit more time on that, you know, on that particular landscape plant, to try to get some greenery that is a little bit taller, but it's over in the pond here. It's not these people's responsibility, so...
But normally, if there would have been space, we would have required a little more landscaping back.
Well, yes.
There's just no space, so if we could just remind people of that.
Was this a comment?
Yeah.
Was that a good...
Yeah.
So I'll recommend a review of the landscape plan on the eastern, the eastern side?
Well, it's the west side of the detention, detention pond, east side of the, east side of the building, yeah. Between 36 and the east side, east elevation.
Correct. This wouldn't be a condition of the FDP, but it is a comment.
About relating to the...
Yeah, related to the FDP, okay. Between, so that would be east side of the building, between highway, actually, between the detention pond and the building, right?
Right.
And Fred, you said to put it just to focus on, on higher growth.
Yeah, just something like that.
Hope I do ensure that high-growth trees and shrubbery is included.
Just some higher growth, just to kind of reevaluate that. I mean, it's already, you know, it's already been approved.
Okay.
But it hasn't been planted, so there's always...
Not been planted.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so anything further? Okay.
There may be a reason why they don't have trees on top of the pond. I don't know.
Right, yeah.
Jeff, can you review our list of conditions?
Yeah, I'm gonna do a little bit of filling in the blanks here, but I'm gonna do the conditions first. So again, I can, I can reread them again if you want, but basically, the conditions one through five presented in the staff report, with condition four reading, counts of parked vehicles must be taken at least every quarter on a Friday evening, and then the rest is the, it's the same. I didn't see any, any other changes from one through five of that staff report. Then there's a new condition, section...
I, I want it at three to at least once.
Once.
In other words, to open up the possibility that if it's...
Once every quarter. Okay, at least once every quarter.
At least once, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, no problem. Section six, six says the signage shown in the FDP, let me read that again. The condition would be that the signage shown in the FDP not be approved, and that all signage be presented for future approval in a formal, complete signed plan. So those are the six conditions that I had. And then we have, I think we have also six comments, I believe. The first comment is that the planning commission finds that exceeding the PD height limit...
Jeff, I'm sorry, before you go on.
Yeah.
You, you said six conditions. I'm sorry, I have seven.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if one of them's combined. So I had the, the, the sign, the sign plan, that was one that we added.
Right.
Had the seating up front and the seat walls.
That's all.
That's actually in section, that's the first condition.
It's included in this.
But I have six conditions from the staff, plus, I'm sorry, I have one, two, three, four. I have six condition, six staff recommendations.
There's not.
Fred was saying five, but no.
Do you have the actual document?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The actual document.
So, okay, well, go ahead and continue on my list.
Oh, okay. That's fine. I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
Yep.
I think I was, I was reading off the cheat sheet here, so. Okay, so I have six comments. The first comment is, the planning commission finds that exceeding the PD height limit, as shown on the FDP, is satisfactory. Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
And I missed the second condition on the engineering. I just didn't catch that. I was writing something else down. There was an overengineering condition?
Oh, parking design.
Overengineering.
Design, the structure.
Is that a condition or a comment?
Comment.
That's a comment.
It's a comment, yeah. Sort of promote the idea that the, the design of the structures, they're able to withstand being made higher than the original plan.
Oh, okay.
Sure.
We should, we can consider design and structures so that... We consider design and structures so that the height can be increased to additional parking?
Yes.
Let me just get that.
And maybe add to that comment that Randy from Rance Capital was going to take a look at that.
Okay. Okay, let me just finish right, and that's so I get that right. Okay. Okay, and then the third condition was.
Comment.
Comment, sorry, excuse me. Town staff should perform a more detailed analysis of sales tax revenue generated by the development to address concerns prevented, presented in the title of Lewisville letter.
No, just generated per square foot, of sales tax revenue generated per square foot.
Okay. Okay. The fourth comment is that pro-stack review bike access from the Highway 36 corridor into the FDP area. Does that sound proven?
Yeah.
Okay. The fifth comment is, the architectural, architectural appearance should resemble architectural renderings presented by the applicant at the planning commission meeting rather than the drawings included as part of the FDP.
Of the elevation, of the, the elevation.
Elevations.
I have a lot of the, meaning, comment items, lighting and energy compliance, in terms of the order.
Oh, we, we actually ruled those out.
Okay.
And so we would accept those.
Okay, and then the sixth comment is, I didn't get that written out properly, so maybe I could have somebody else help me with that one.
Except the landscape plan? So I, I recommend a review of the landscape plan on the east side of the building between the detention pond and the building to ensure that higher growth trees and shrubbery are considered.
Okay.
I think we were kind of isolating that to basically review on the off-site. There's not much they can do on the on-site.
It's off-site, yes, yes.
So it's, it's, it's on the, it's on the pond side of the line.
Okay, this is a comment, so it's basically dealing with other landscaping.
Definitely off-site.
Okay. So review off-site landscape plan on the east side of building between detention pond.
Well, and the property line.
Yeah, okay, and property line, rather than, yeah, right.
Okay. Does that sound like, well?
Discuss. Okay.
What about our comment about the general look of the?
That was the rendering versus architecture.
Right, did I hear?
Yeah, so what I said was.
Oh, I missed that.
No, it's okay. I said architectural appearance should resemble architectural renderings presented by applicant during, at the planning commission hearing rather than elevations included as part of the FDP.
Okay. Okay, so we got our conditions and our comments. Any further discussion? Or somebody want to make a motion to?
I'd like to make one comment, just, you know, it's just more of a comment.
Okay.
It's not a comment to make a comment on the plan, but I miss the fact that we lost Boulder Valley ice, you know, the gateway to Boulder Valley. I don't know where that went to, but it just kind of, we, it's lost, you know? We're the gateway to Boulder Valley, and we lost Boulder Valley ice. In this document, I didn't see it named anywhere, so.
I understand.
No, I, I don't know about that, but it's just, I kind of miss seeing it.
So just to clarify, if there's going to be a motion to approve, this is going to be a motion to approve resolution number PC dash seven, with the six conditions we discussed, and actually, there's an additional condition in the resolution already, which is our standard condition, that applicant shall make minor technical and redline corrections to plans as identified by town staff. That'd be another one of the conditions.
Right, yeah. Okay. I'll take a stab at this.
Okay.
So move to approve resolution recommending the town board approve the final development plan, case number FDP dash 2013 dash two, for Rance Sports at Superior with the following conditions. One, the minor technical and redline conditions as identified by staff shall be made, and five, how many additional?
Six.
Six additional conditions that were just read into the record earlier by attorney, Town Attorney Jeff.
Parker.
Parker, thank you.
Okay.
And, yeah, and that a list of recommendations be included.
In a staff report.
In the staff report. Yeah, we're in that condition, but yeah, comment, comments, yeah, comments be included in the staff report, again, as read into the record by Jeff Parker earlier.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for resolution PC seven by Commissioner McCullough and a second by Commissioner Eaton. Further discussion? All those in favor? Pass is unanimous. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, we've got one more item on our agenda. It's item number six, discussion and approval of the changes to the transportation plan.
You want to take a break?
Alex, you want to come up and tell us what you've changed?
Okay, as we discussed last meeting, the, the planning commission had a number of comments on the transportation plan, and so we went back and, I think you can bring that up. We went back and tried to incorporate what we had heard, and we added some other items that I think is going to be reflected in some of the comments. I think we go on page twenty-three, if you have the document, will you change anything up to page twenty-three? And on that page, under the discussion of McCaslin, we added a paragraph concerning Marshall, McCaslin intersection, and roughly outlined the types of improvements that we were anticipating in terms of adding lanes and so forth. We noted that it's one of the busiest intersections of town and key to our, the economic vitality of town, and then we went on to describe the, the improvements we were anticipating on that. And then further on, on the McCaslin discussion on page twenty-four, we deleted a lot of the sections that pertaining landscaping, because that was part of the division that we had, we had outlined, and now all brought back in terms of the improvements when they're designed. But we included, the roundabouts are recommended. We changed one thing about the intersection of Main Street at the Town Center, recommended was added. Couple of sentences were, were deleted in terms of the landscaping. You had some comments about the design of the facility, and we thought that that last paragraph that was already in there reflected that, but we added any roadway improvements, and then we kept in cap, should be carefully designed to provide safe, efficient, and varied user experience for the vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians. And careful attention should be given to roadway segments that have houses nearby. So we, we think that reflected the discussion that the planning commission had in terms of how that facility should be designed in the future. Let's see, going forward, pages, page twenty-six, we added a paragraph for the campus drive, health park drive extension, that we didn't have any write-up, so we added a write-up on that. And then we added on page twenty-seven, a write-up on the access to Southport or Original Superior. And we had some pictures about the flood and so forth, and we provided a write-up of how potential access could be improved in the future.
Yeah.
And then, let's see. Going to page thirty-one, we added a new section because we had the roadway plan, we had the trails plan, but alternative modes, really didn't have a plan for it, so we created a new section, adding other modes of transportation, and we talked about local bus stops, a mini transportation hub within Superior Town Center, the call and ride service, that we talked about, a townwide shuttle that our traffic and safety committee had recommended, express bus service from McCaslin Park and Ride to DIA, and then additional bus service between Superior and Lewisville, car and bike share programs, and electrical vehicle supports. So we added all that, and then we referenced the first and final mile study that was done recently, and we picked out five recommendations that were in that study to highlight here. There, there are several other recommendations that we didn't feel were appropriate for this study, but we picked five that we thought were, should be highlighted from that study and included in our plan. So if you, I don't know if you've had a chance to review that, but if anything that was reflect, that you discussed that wasn't reflected.
Yeah, thanks, Alex. This looks really good. I think we've come a long way from where we started, and this is, this really reflects a broad swath across the whole town. One comment I have on page twenty-six that talks about Seventy-Sixth Street, I believe included in the improvements which we see in the sections provided, but not in the verbiage, is that bicycle lanes will be added, and it could maybe be good to just be explicit about that, because we don't have bicycle lanes on Seventy-Sixth Street now, and a lot of bicyclists really use it, and so just, like I say, the sections show it, but I don't see it in the.
In the write-up. Okay, we'll add that to the write-up.
And then just one other quick comment. I believe during many times during the day, not every DIA bus, but many of them actually do express from Superior onto DIA. There are certain times of the day that they will make some additional stops because of this Stapleton thing, but that's a few times in the morning and a few times in the afternoon, I believe. But on the most part, when you pick up the DIA bus from the Superior Park and Ride, most of the time, I believe, we are that last stop coming out of Boulder. So I just wanted to say we, we already have a good part of that in. I, I wish they could take another route rather than get tied up in I-70 traffic, but that's a different RTD matter, I think.
I thought they did. What I've written, that they go some weird way, but.
Yeah, no, I've, I've always been fed into two-seventy to seventy and on up. Yeah.
I got a bunch of just little comments. So, starting on page twenty-three, just a quick question. The through, the through lanes that you're talking about in the new paragraph, that still would just end, be ending just south of Coal Creek, right? You're not proposing that three lanes continue on up the hill? Right now, that third, the third lane that goes through, heading, heading south, and ends just, just south of Coal Creek Drive. That would stay that way, right? You're not.
That would stay that way. It's the north, adding a through lane to the north.
On, again, some of these are just, just verbiage type stuff, so on page twenty-four, third paragraph, both of the roundabouts create a sense of entry. Is that, I mean, we're sort of saying they do create a sense. Are we saying they should create or will create, or going, I mean, is this a?
Should.
They don't exist, so.
Right, right, okay.
So that's more of a, should, that should probably say should create.
Okay.
And then in the next paragraph, you mentioned wherever possible, roadway design controls should be employed to limit speeds to forty-five, and I was just maybe going to suggest that we say limit speeds to no, to no more than, see how, I, my comments not, to a maximum speed of forty-five, rather than saying that we are going to be at forty-five and we might do thirty-five in some sections, right? So rather than saying that they will be forty-five, that they be a, a maximum speed of forty-five.
Okay.
And this thing about a roundabout at one-twenty-eight, did we decide in our last meeting that we were going to recommend that, we not, I mean, were we in agreement not to recommend a roundabout at one-twenty-eight, or anybody remember?
I don't think we talked about that, but it's not in here anymore.
Well, it is here, so.
Oh, it is there? Oh, okay, because I.
Yeah, State Highway one-twenty-eight on page twenty-four, somewhere else, too. So the roundabout is proposed at State Highway one-twenty-eight, McCaslin intersection.
At one point, I thought I read that it had been taken out in a different place where it talked about roundabouts, and so if I.
Well, it was always, it was in there. We didn't, we didn't take it out. I don't recall a discussion. I, I know we've had comments to take it out.
No, no, I know that, but, but I mean, I, when I read this document, there was one place where it changed, where it used to be four or something.
It's like it listed, yeah.
Yeah, it missed it. It did not list it.
Right, but so there's one, yeah, I did, I saw that, too. And it didn't list it in one place, but it's saying it's there and a couple others.
Yeah.
Do we want to make a recommendation there? We can talk about that. I'll go down my list.
Well, we might want to do at least a straw poll of the commissioners and just kind of see where we are.
Well, we'll put that on the issue list, and I'll just hit some of these other little nets here. This might be another issue, too. So on Colton Road, minor arterial, we talked about a roundabout was constructed at the intersection of McCaslin Boulevard in 2010. Colton Road becomes Flatiron's consideration. But there was, there was discussion about wanting to, and I think Commissioners of Town brought this up, do we want to comment on reducing, trying, trying to design ways to reduce the truck and pass through traffic? Oh, that actually, I'm sorry, that wasn't on Colton Road. That was, that was on, or McCaslin Boulevard, I guess that is. I don't know where that would go, but there was a desire to try to create a scenario where we would discourage truck traffic down.
Kind of did that, didn't we, though, on McCaslin and Colton, and it doesn't work because the trucks drive over the.
No, they do, yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean we have to take it out of our plan.
It doesn't work.
But on Marshall Road, I don't know if it's meaningful that this be in our plan, but we talked about it extending in ninety-three, but the way it seems to make more sense is, yeah, ninety-three gets you to South Boulder, Cherryvale gets you to East Boulder. I mean, that, that connection, again, I don't know if it's meaningful to put in our plan, but I just mentioned that it's a connection to Cherryvale and ninety-three, providing access to South Boulder and East Boulder. I mean, we really have nice access into Boulder. And we mentioned ConocoPhillips, but they don't own that property anymore, so on the campus.
I know, they took out a one and then tried to, the Campus Drive, how do you.
Yeah, or the old ConocoPhillips. I don't know who owns it now, but anyways.
Or the former storage tech. I mean, everybody knows what that is, because the former.
The old storage tech.
The oldest.
Yeah, we could, we could say that. Anyway.
Former, yeah.
Not all that important, but. And then, let's see, oh, well, again, the roundabouts under, on page twenty, on page thirty, we did mention this, McCaslin Boulevard, State Highway one-twenty-eight, roundabout again. And then, lastly, I, I think lastly, on the townwide shuttle on page thirty-one, just more to be kind of correct, we, we talk about transit stops, including Superior Marketplace, Town Center, we say Rock Creek, McCaslin Park and Ride, and Flatiron's Park. We don't mention South Colton, we don't mention Horizons, we don't mention Original Town or Sagamore. I, I don't know if the thought was that this thing would cover the town, but if we're going to mention two neighborhoods, we probably ought to.
Mention one.
If that's our intent, that the shuttle would kind of cover the town. We either say we'll cover all residential areas of the town, or we should probably list, it might be easier just to say it would cover the residential areas of the town.
Well, originally, it said come within three blocks of every resident, which.
Well, that's, that's pretty, that's a, so we provide access to residential areas of the town, too, Superior Marketplace and Town Center. Might be a way to do it, just so we don't leave anybody out. And it would cover if any new neighborhoods get built, so. Yeah, I think that was my, that was my last one.
Okay, wait. So are you removing, are you taking one-twenty-eight McCaslin out?
Yeah, those are our issues. Do we want to talk about?
Why don't you give us a direction now?
Isn't that a state highway?
It is a state highway, yeah.
What's a roundabout on state highway?
Why not? There are roundabouts on state highways. We have DDI, we have the DDI. We mentioned US-36 and the, and the interchange improvements.
Right.
I mean, it's.
Maybe we could soften it, though, to say, consider a more effective access to McCaslin off of one-twenty-eight with the possibility of a roundabout or something like that. I mean, is it, sort of proposing, because it says we propose a roundabout. Instead of a proposal, maybe we should say, consider other, more efficient or effective accesses to McCaslin, such as a potential of a roundabout or something like that. I don't know. If you soften it a little bit, because this, this is really a plan. It's not a proposal necessarily.
I just, had uphill into that.
Yeah.
It's very.
I think.
No, it's uphill, but I mean, you could, you can flatten it out. I mean, right now, right now, that's.
Now, was a Marko Bismarck think about that?
Yeah, right.
Can't take a foot off of that.
Anybody else have any other, other ideas?
Well, I.
Hold on, I'm going to tell you.
I don't.
What's that, Tom?
I don't like it's a suitable situation for a roundabout.
Okay. Why don't we just get a straw poll on each, each person?
Either do I, I don't like the, all the. Either do I or all the elevation changes.
Okay.
The first time I heard it was the first meeting that I attended, it was a surprise to me, you know, so I could see where it could work. But I, I think we have to do a lot of thinking about it before we can say we're proposing it. And I would agree, I'm not in any frame of mind to necessarily propose that. If we want to study it, that could be a different matter.
Right, I, I like the idea of putting, changing the language to, we'll consider it, I like that. To me, it's probably the, would, in my mind, would be one of the lower priority areas to roundabout. I think McAslin in Indiana would be, make a lot more sense. 128, probably lower priority in my mind.
Yes, I'm inclined to defer strongly to Alex. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's anybody who knows more about traffic flows and roundabouts in the world than, than you do. But I, I think given the, what we've heard from at least one citizen, it probably makes sense to, to just, you know, further study it. Make sure that it's what everybody in the community wants, you know, before we, before we propose it.
I agree with you.
I'd say we just leave it out and not mention it at all. Not, not say no, not say yes, it comes up someday, well. I think we're kind of split right now.
How did it get in there in the first place, I guess? Was it a grave concern? Oh, no, I mean, I know you put it in there, but what, what was the concern or the basis for the proposal for a roundabout up there? Is there problems up there with those?
Not problems, it's, it's more to facilitate access for our residents. Right now, 128 is a state highway, but the volumes are coming to and from Superior. And so, a roundabout would better serve those particular traffic flows and a traffic lane. And it's not a critical thing to me, it's just a possible location. And again, state highway would have to prove, so it's not going to be any.
Well, now what you just said is probably what we should put in there. Consider better traffic flows for the residents of Superior off of 128.
Yeah, I, I like, I like that. Or, I mean, and if the point is to discourage traffic, then something about that, I mean, that could be.
Big gate up there.
Well, no, you just put a, put a red light in there with no turn, no right turn on. That lasts about two and a half minutes, and that's right.
No one will stop.
They have them in a lot of places.
They do. I like, I do like that wording.
Okay, consider that, where we just said, like what you said, Alex, which was, consider better traffic flow access for residents of Superior off of 128.
How's everybody feel about that? Straw poll, anybody? Okay.
I guess I'm a little bit concerned that that might be inconsistent with what we heard from Ms. Horton. Maybe I misunderstood what she was saying, but I think what she was saying is, she doesn't want to make it easier for people to come off of 128 onto the Caslin, especially with the.
I think her concern is that roundabouts end up, you know, it's, it continues flow, so you're not interrupting traffic. But even the way it is now, the traffic making the right there. I mean, we're not.
May as well be uninterrupted.
Right, and going, going north, it's not affecting it, but it's, it's, I mean, going south, it's not affecting it. But going north, you make that right turn, you have that free movement now, anyway.
The only time I have to stop, it's every time I come from Boulder to Boulder on 128 from the west, I always have to stop at that red light. You know, when I want to turn left there. But, which, you know, is, is, as she was saying, that, you know, the roundabout, now at Colton and, and McAslin is basically, you've got to kind of do the, when am I going to get on the merry-go-round, you know, how can I get in there? And that's what she doesn't want, and I would agree with that.
And, you know, stoplights create these patoons of traffic. And then these gaps of traffic, and roundabouts kind of, it's more evened out. And I'm not sure one or the other is, is what she's getting at. I mean, if there are areas where you have side streets like Indiana, maybe there's an issue where the tunes help you because then there's a big gap in traffic and so you can get out. And maybe that roundabouts now creating the, the gaps at Indiana.
Well, I think, I'm, I'm okay with going back to, anytime that we can do something in a transportation way, plan, that supports the ease of access for our residents, we should consider that. And if there's been an issue, then, then it's perfectly acceptable to put something like we just talked about in there, associated with 128 getting into Superior for our residents.
And I don't think we're going to discourage any, I mean, there's no way into Superior up from that side, other than that turn. I mean, short of doing some traffic mitigation and doing some traffic calming coming down the hill, I don't think we're going to change the volume of traffic, we might do it and slow it down, but.
I think that's, that's the key in this whole discussion. I think what we want to do is slow down the traffic. We don't really want to discourage people from using McAslin, we just don't want them to use it at 70 miles per hour.
And that goes back to your comment about, about the 45 miles per hour. I also want to see that as a, no more than 45 miles per hour. You know, because, not even maximum, because then it seems like you're going to always be 45. You know, we're going to do traffic calming or reduction of traffic or something. But no more than, no greater than 45, so we can do something less than that.
I think the way Bob put it, not to exceed.
Either, either one.
Yeah, either one, just not use the word maximum, because then everybody's going to want to use the maximum.
Right.
As they accept the norm.
Okay.
I'm good.
I think we, I think we can interpret the roundabout. I did have a report on 88 Sumot Creek. There were seven accidents over two and a half year period or so. I think he wanted to know which approach or whatever, but we had three southbound on, on 88th. We had three eastbound or southbound on Rock Creek. And one northwestbound. And three, one was an icy condition where they slid into the circle. One happened to be in the circle, side by side, people hitting each other. There were, most of them were rear end, where people were entering the circle. And there would be a pedestrian in the crosswalk or something where the, the entering vehicle stopped and the one behind it thought it was going to go. So that was predominant accident type. There was one on exiting where there was a bicyclist on an exit and a vehicle stopped and someone right behind him hit. So those are the types of accidents we're getting. I'm not sure if that answers your, your question.
Perfectly, and, and it's really fewer than I thought there were, would be, you know. Seven in two and a half years is really not too bad, I don't think.
Can I add something though? Because I live in that vicinity. And the problem continues to be the calming of the traffic just is consistently flowing through all area. So nobody can get out of.
Sumot?
Coal Creek or.
Okay, Coal Creek.
Coal Ridge. And I would guess there would probably be some activity there, but I don't really know. I haven't ever seen accidents here.
At those two.
A lot of frustrated people, though.
Right, and I, you know, actually, at Coal Ridge and.
Coal Ridge is worse.
And at Coal Creek, I think there was one at Coal Ridge. But there haven't been too many at those intersections. There are a couple at Pick and, and Rock Creek, but none that I saw at Coal Creek. So very, very low accidents at those, but.
A lot of people are troubled here now.
And at some point, I'm compiling this accident data in a little more detailed fashion. Because I've been collecting now for two years, I think we're getting some data that I can actually use. And what types of accidents are we getting and go out and try to do some countermeasures. Like, like 88th, we have accidents because it don't have turn lanes. So we're getting those types of accidents that I think by adding turn lanes, then we can prevent some of those. So at some point in the future, I'll be compiling this with a report to the board and to you.
Was that, is that sort of getting at what Tom's talking about? In the sense that you can make, if you have warrants based on accidents.
Yes.
Then you can talk about improvements which gets that reducing frustration. Yeah. That's, that's where that's going. I mean, that's, that's a good point here constantly in our areas. You can't get out. Can't get out. Turn left and you can't get out.
So I don't know if we had a motion last time and would, appreciate a motion from the board, from the commission to the board, you know, recommending the plan. And incorporating the comments you made.
Okay, anybody like to make a motion or further discussion?
I'll do it. I make a motion to recommend approval of the transportation, to the Board of Trustees to approve the transportation plan with comments as articulated through our discussion. Acceptable.
Motion by Commissioner McColl.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ricker. All those in favor? Passes unanimous. Staff announcements?
Haven't thought about that. I don't have any. We have coming up, I think, a work session with the parties that want to put in a co-housing project at, up here at 302 Maple, with 302 Maple, but it's where, it's the blank, it's the part of the block, or it's the block that has, on the north, the north side of the block that has no, nothing on it right now. And that is on next Monday.
Monday at 6:00 PM if you're able to.
6:00 PM, if you're interested in that.
So what kind of notification has, is this a work session where neighbors have been notified?
This is simply a concept plan, so it's, there has been no application brought forth by the developer at this point. So we've encouraged them to reach out to the neighbors, to get feedback from the neighbors prior to, you know, taking the time to develop an application. But no, there's, this is, this is very informal at this point.
And so when did we say it is? What's the date and date?
Monday, December 9th at 6:00 PM.
The, the board is going to consider the Ice Ranch proposal you just went through on, when?
Monday.
The 9th, yeah, the 9th, okay. So if you're interested in going to see what, what their discussion is like about the project you just talked about. That's all I have, do you think of anything? Okay.
Fred, you know when the board's going to take up the transportation plan?
I do not, maybe Alex does.
I believe, looking at January 13th.
Okay, Commissioner Dozel.
I have a question, at least you probably know. When, when was the plan to have the joint meeting between the Lewisville Town Board and the Superior Town Board?
I'm not sure if that's been confirmed yet, as soon as it will be confirmed, I'm sure staff will, you know.
Okay.
It's not confirmed that I know of.
They mentioned the 13th or 15th or something of December.
I don't know.
At the last board meeting, so, okay, thank you. That'd be good, because we can go to that, right? Because it's a public meeting, I assume, if the whole board is there.
Yeah, that's fine.
I would assume so.
Is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. As a mean, as a attendees of it, right. I'd be very interested in that, okay.
Has there been any date or dates discussed for Planning Commission, Town Board dinner or meeting?
I don't have an update on that one at this time.
Not to me, not yet to me.
Okay. And last Monday, Commissioner Dozel and I went to the Town Board meeting and listened to the work session on the Calmonte proposal. And seemed like very positive feedback from the board on the proposal to convert the commercial space at Calmonte to single-family home development. And so that will probably be coming forward as well.
Yeah, staff is going to meet with them to talk about their process.
Okay.
So I, yeah, I think they got a favorable, positive impression, so I figure they're moving forward.
Okay. Anyone have anything else? Okay.
Sorry, I'm taking Liz Cross's spot tonight, but appreciate you putting up with me.
Thank you. And I'm pleased that we were able to get through all this tonight, so, great job everyone. We're adjourned.